This meeting of the Town Council to order, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's a couple of things different about tonight's meeting. This is the first time we're trying to do a combined live and Zoom meeting. One of our counselors is out of town, and this is something we've been working on to be able to make it so that we can have future meetings with people that still feel uncomfortable with coming in. I appreciate those of you that have come in, and I realize we're keeping distance, so we only have room for about 11 people. It's something we want to continue to work with. So, to view the live meeting, you can tune into Merrimack TV, Channel 20, on Comcast, merrimacktv.com, click Watch Live and choose Channel 20, or on Roku slash Apple TV devices via Cablecast Screen Weave. You can listen via the telephone. Dial either of the following telephone numbers and enter the meeting ID number when prompted. The meeting ID numbers should be showing on the bottom of your screen, 1-929-205-6099, or 1-301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 959-97126496. If you wish to speak during the public hearing, when prompted to do so by the chairman, that would be me, you may press *9 to be placed in the queue. When it is your turn to speak, the chairman or designee will recognize you by the last three digits of your phone number, and you'll be asked to state your name and address for the recorded minutes. If there are any questions, speak up or... ...to reach Nicholas back in the room, and he can help you as well. But, and I can see the numbers on the bottom of the screen, so we're in good shape. So, we've done the call to order and Pledge of Allegiance announcements. I have some. Our town offices will be closed on Monday, February 15th, for the observance of Presidents' Day. Upcoming Town Council meetings, Thursday, February 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, will be a regular meeting. Wednesday, March 10th, at 7:00 PM, at the James Mastecole Upper Elementary School for the deliberative session. And Thursday, March 25th, will be a regular meeting at 7:00 PM. And if I'm not mistaken, we also have a meeting scheduled for next week to hear a, any, to hear a, help me out.
Hear a petition warrant article that was delivered.
A petition warrant article that was delivered to the town office recently. So, that'll be February 18th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Eileen, did you have other announcements?
I just have one. 2021 dog licenses are now available. Per New Hampshire state law, all owners of dogs four months or older are required to license their dog by May 1st. Owners must present a valid rabies certificate and neutering or spaying certificate if applicable. Licenses are available at the town clerk's office during normal business hours of 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. License renewals can also be completed online using the payment services at www.merrimacknh, one word, .gov, G-O-V, by mail or by using the Dropbox. See the dog licensing in the Town Clerk's section of the website for more information. Thank you. Oh, wait, sorry. Filing period for town offices will be held February 24th to March 5th, 2021. Candidates must file with the town clerk to have their name placed on the ballot and must be a registered voter and domiciled in Merrimack. Candidates for Town Council must also have been domiciled in Merrimack for at least one year. Please see the town website or contact the town clerk's office for further details. Thank you.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments on the announcements? So, town filing is coming up at the end of the month, prior to the deliberative session for openings. Comments from the press and public? Anybody wishing to address the council at this point in the meeting, please let us know. Come up to the mic and/or dial in quickly if you're listening on the telephone. I know there's a delay of about 20 to 30 seconds, and so we'll give you a few moments. We have no recognitions, resignations, or retirements to talk about tonight. Appointments, tonight we have with us the Assistant Director of Public Works, wastewater Director Sarita Croce, and Attorney Joanna Torango.
Torango.
Torango. The Town Council to receive an update on the St. Cobain thermal oxidizer. So, Sarita, I think you're going to lead off on this.
Good evening, Chairman Koenig, or Koenig, sorry. I always do it wrong. Vice Chair Boyd and members of the Merrimack... Oh, closer, you can't hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Sarita. I work for the town of Merrimack, and I'm the Assistant Public Works Director, responsible for the wastewater treatment plant and various environmental compliance issues. I'm here tonight to give you an update on the status of St. Cobain Performance Plastics' temporary air permit. The air pollution device, the air pollution device that was required to be installed by law to address the ongoing pollution emitted from St. Cobain's Merrimack facility by today at midnight has not yet been installed. In fact, the town was informed by St. Cobain one month ago, today, that the installation of the air pollution control device, which is a regenerative thermal oxidizer, and I'll refer to it as an RTO moving forward, would not be installed by the permitted deadline. St. Cobain's pollution has contaminated groundwater in the town of Merrimack. The groundwater is a source of drinking water for the towns of Merrimack, Bedford, and Amherst, and the drinking water is supplied by MVD. In order to give everybody a sense of why this is significant, I'd like to spend a few minutes reviewing some of the history. St. Cobain's primarily manufactures coated fabrics and films which contain PFAS like PFOA. At the facility, there are 18 process stacks which emit these highly toxic chemicals. In mid-February 2016, upon discovering PFOA in drinking water in the state of New York and Vermont that was severely contaminated by their plant, St. Cobain collected several water samples of municipal water supplied by the Merrimack Village District, MVD, for PFAS analysis. St. Cobain self-reported the findings to New Hampshire DES on February 26th, 2016. Subsequent to the notification, New Hampshire DES, to New Hampshire DES, St. Cobain commenced investigations of groundwater, surface water, and stack emissions to determine both extent and cause of groundwater, surface water contamination. Stack testing was conducted in April 2018. Based on a review of the data and the associated air dispersion modeling, the primary cause of contamination was the St. Cobain's emissions via their process stacks. New Hampshire DES notified St. Cobain on December 20, on September 26th, 2018, that the emissions from their operations caused and continue to contribute to an exceedance of New Hampshire Ambient Groundwater Quality Standards, AGQS. These PFAS are so toxic that they are measured in parts per trillion, which equates to one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So, I have a little description here. Or a pinch of salt in 10 tons of potato chips. To give everyone perspective, the October 2020 supplemental site investigation report identified the concentrations of PFAS for which the groundwater quality standards exist. So, there are four groundwater quality standards right now. It's PFHXS, PFNA, PFOS, and PFOA. So, those are the four that are present right now. Now, if you take a look here at PFHXS, you'll see that the groundwater quality standard is 18. If you take a look at PFNA, the groundwater quality standard is 11. PFOS, the groundwater quality standard is 15. And PFOA, the groundwater quality standard is 12. Now, I'd like you to look at the third column here presented to you on this slide, and you'll see for PFHXS, the highest concentration that they've seen in the monitoring wells on and adjacent to the property is 195 parts per trillion. And that was based on a sample collected in March 2019. For PFNA, for which the groundwater quality standard is 11, the highest concentration of, that was detected in the monitoring well was 2,960 parts per trillion, and that was in July 2019. For PFOS, again, the groundwater quality standard is 15, and the highest concentration that was detected was 3,300 parts per trillion. And then, again, that was in March 2019. The most alarming result, which is in red here, is PFOA. The groundwater quality standard is 12 parts per trillion, and the highest concentration detected in a monitoring well on-site was 69,500 parts per trillion, and that was in March of 2019. So, the primary cause of contamination to the town's land, water, and air was determined to be from St. Cobain's stack emissions. As a result of this pollution, New Hampshire DES required St. Cobain to comply with state law and obtain a permit mandating the installation of air pollution controls within one year by today, which is February 11th, 2021. St. Cobain submitted a confidential and redacted air permit application to New Hampshire DES in March of 2019. A redacted air permit application is one where they blackout certain information because they consider that privileged and confidential. So, when I looked at the air permit application, there was actually information that we could not figure out. So, we could not figure out what necessarily were the process rates and the emission rates for everything, because they had blanked out all of that information. The air permit requiring the installation of the RTO was issued on February 11th, 2020, almost four years after St. Cobain initially notified New Hampshire DES of the elevated contamination in the town's resources. Following the issuance of the air permit, the town submitted an appeal to address components of the air permit that did not properly address public health, welfare, and safety concerns. On June 4th, 2020, St. Cobain requested a variance that would allow them more time to install the RTO beyond the February 11, 2021 deadline. The request was made for a one-year extension, or they asked for an extension based on when the appeal would be finally issued by the Air Resources Council. On September 10th, 2020, New Hampshire DES formally declined the variance based on the following two key facts. Number one, the current emissions of PFAS and precursors continue to contribute to an exceedance of AGQS, that's the groundwater quality standards. Therefore, granting a variance would create a danger to public health. And that can be found in the finding of facts document that was prepared and distributed on September 10th, 2020. Subsequent to the variance denial, on November 24th, St. Cobain submitted to the Merrimack Fire Department a three-page application to install a concrete pad for the RTO. This application did not comply with any of the International Building Codes or NFPA codes, and these are basic building codes that apply to municipalities, thousands of municipalities across this nation. In addition, the drawing submitted was not stamped by a professional engineer as required. The drawing submitted, and I'd like to show you, so this first drawing, what I'd like to show you, was something that was put together over, I don't have, so this first drawing over here is something that was put together on an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper. It did not have a engineer's stamp. This here is the actual application. And the part of this that was the most concerning and kind of unusual is that they submitted a drawing that specifically states "for discussion purposes only, not for construction." That's normally not the case in these situations. This application resembled what someone might submit when they were building a shed on their property. It's certainly not indicative of what one would submit for a project of this size. And just to give you an idea, as a comparison, we are engaging in a $22.62 million upgrade. If you take a look at the submission that we made to New Hampshire DES because we're required to, it was about two-and-a-half, three inches thick, and that was just the drawings. Our specification package were two books that were about six inches thick. These facts, it should also be noted that in the past 10 years, the Town of Merrimack Fire Department has responded to six fires at the St. Cobain facility where these toxic pollutants, PFAS, continue to be emitted. These facts emphasize the need for a complete plan review for compliance with building and fire codes to ensure the town is protected, is protecting emergency responders, and abutting property owners as required by applicable ordinances and laws. On January 11th, 2021, St. Cobain informed the town during a meeting that the RTO, which is the air pollution control device, would not be installed by the February 11th, 2021 deadline, which is today. A couple of things I want to note here as well is that if you look back at all of St. Cobain's monthly reports that they were submitting to New Hampshire DES, they never provided any information on schedule in those reports. It is normal in a project of this size, and it'll be normal for the Town of Merrimack, that every single month we will have a schedule, and in the schedule, we will identify the critical path items. Those are the items that can affect you from meeting your deadlines as required, and you normally will report on these every single month. There was no such submission by St. Cobain. On February 9th, 2021, I sent an email to New Hampshire DES asking for an update on the noncompliance issue. New Hampshire DES stated that New Hampshire DES does not comment on potential or pending enforcement actions or investigations. St. Cobain during the past five years has been allowed to continue to discharge chemicals from their stacks that continue to contaminate the town's drinking water. St. Cobain in the past five years has not installed any groundwater or surface water remediation systems, or any treatment systems to address the groundwater or surface water contamination. Finally, please also note, the Merrimack Village District was required to install a treatment system to remove PFAS from the groundwater wells four and five to render them suitable for drinking water at a cost of $5.1 million. St. Cobain only contributed $3.4 million to the project. The balance of the $1.7 million, which excludes the interest on the loan, will be paid by MVD water users. St. Cobain is also not willing to pay for the ongoing operation and maintenance costs associated with the treatment that is removing their contamination. So, any questions?
So, they filed for a permit. The permit was issued a year ago. The permit allowed them one year to get the RTO in place. At no time along there did they tell anybody that they were not making it, they weren't up to speed, they weren't catching up with it, and yet, at the last month, they sent us a note saying that, by the way, we're not going to get that RTO in place.
So, they didn't send us a note? We had a meeting with them?
We had a meeting with them.
And during the meeting, they said that they were not going to have the RTO online by February 11, 2021, or today. I don't know what they said to New Hampshire DES. It's my understanding from the conversation that we had that day and from our legal counsel, Joanna, that they did let New Hampshire DES know in November of last year that the RTO was not going to be online. But the...
But their official reports, which I presume we can see...
Yes.
Because they're posted or something, never said anything about having problems with meeting the schedule.
No. And in fact, they're, after they spoke to us, which was January 11th, 2021, that they actually issued another report, and they didn't mention it in that report either.
So, all of the public statements haven't said a word about not being able to make it, and so suddenly we find ourselves today, they haven't made it.
That is correct.
And they still want to continue to operate emitting PFAs and all those kinds of things into the air.
Joanna will actually review the letter that they submitted to us today, which states that they believe that they're in compliance with the permit.
Does anybody else have questions or comments at this point? Bill?
The only comment that I would make, Mr. Chairman, just to point out to my colleagues, is the permit was issued on February 11th, 2020, and they had a year to build this thing. And then, three months later, they came back looking for a variance. So, it was already problematic at the onset when they got the permit that they were going to be struggling with it. The thing that, the thing that boggles my mind, in all candor, is here we are now on February 11th, and according to the testimony that Sarita's given us tonight, you know, the fact that they haven't even provide any type of a schedule, any type of, you know, anything that suggests that they're trying to work on it, the fact that the application to the fire department was, I'm being generous when I say incomplete. I mean, now you've got a full set of milars for a building department to work with. I mean, the planning department probably would have rejected any applicant coming to the planning, but would have left them out of the office. So, I think it is, for me, the way, it's tremendously insincere, the way that they're acting right now, based on Sarita's testimony and based on the information that we've provided today, that we've heard tonight. So, this is, it's very disappointing. This part of me though wants to be surprised, but I, I'll say it publicly, I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised by the behavior. Thank you.
And I think it's critical, just a minute, Peter, that we, we have residents in this town building a deck on their house that would give us more information than that.
Exactly.
And here's a multi-billion dollar corporation, and they can't even come up with a plan after eight, nine, 10 months to submit to our building department. Yeah, November, after they started in February. I mean, and, so they've known all along what their schedule was. They haven't told anybody how they were progressing. Would seem like there was a plan all along to just not go there. Peter, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I do. Tom, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and like you said, this is a multinational, international corporation, and they've been through this multiple times within the United States, and they still, it's acting, they act as though they're clueless. This is unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I will admit, as a reminder, any votes that we take tonight while Peter's online will have to be done by roll call, so just help me remember that. Nancy?
I think there can be a long discussion about the events over the last, whatever years, six years. But the bottom line comes down to, quote, "Therefore, granting a variance would create a danger to public health." That's the bottom line. I don't care what other kinds of discussions you want to have. And I want to know what our options are, which is what I'm going to be waiting to hear as a Town Counsel.
Yeah, I mean, the DES rightly denied their variance because by law, if it's continuing to present a danger to the public health, they cannot continue. They can't grant the variance, and so I was really happy to see them stand up and do that.
But we have to hear, is there any information from DES that would give us a sense of what they are going to do once they do not comply with that? And it sounds like, we don't know yet, maybe we're going to find out in a couple of moments. But then, what's our responsibility at that point?
So, I'll go ahead and defer to...
Okay.
Joanna Torango.
Was that a good segue for you?
Yes.
Good evening, Joanna.
Chairman Koenig, Koenig?
Koenig.
Oh, sorry.
That's quite all right.
Vice Chair Boyd.
Goes both ways.
Esteemed counselors, I'm Joanna Torango, the town's legal counsel retained to support its response to St. Cobain's pollution. For ease, I hope you'll all call me Joanna, but the easy way to remember how to pronounce it is Toronto with a Joe instead of a toe. And I'm Joanna, so there you go.
There you go.
But you can just call me Joanna. Please, just call me Joanna. So, I was asked to come tonight to talk about kind of how, what's happened over the last 48 hours and what the town's options are on the legal front. As Ms. Croce reported, today was the permit deadline for St. Cobain to bring the RTO online, and they did not do so. While it is true that their January 15th monthly status report, which is required by the permit, they have to file those monthly status reports every month, did not say that they were not bringing the RTO online, even though they told us they weren't bringing it online on January 11th. They have been saying in every monthly status report that because of the town's appeal of the air license and because of the COVID-19 situation, that their timelines could be impacted. As you'll remember, however, those were the same reasons that they raised in their variance in their request for an additional year through February 11th, 2022, which was rejected by DES because of, in part because of the threat to human health and the environment, public health. Yesterday, we sent St. Cobain an email saying, "Please confirm that you will not be issuing, emitting uncontrolled PFCs and their precursors in the town after the deadline for installation of the RTO." Around 4:15, we heard back from them by letter saying, in essence, "Our emissions comply with our permit limits for PFOA and PFOS, and we will continue to comply with those permit limits for those two PFCs." So, my interpretation of that into kind of common language is that our operations are going to continue the same way that they have while we were allegedly getting the RTO online, despite the fact that we have not met that deadline. The town has been in contact with DES and its council, and we have not received any assurances about enforcement action that will be taken. It is absolutely the case that it is normal for DES to not comment on what enforcement action they would take. However, I was slightly surprised to not hear something like, "This is a really serious situation, and DES is taking it very seriously, and you should expect to see action in the near future." That was not the kind of feedback that we were receiving.
What question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just to amplify that point, Joanna, what would you consider if the council were to obey taking any action tonight, what do you feel would be an appropriate period of time to wait on New Hampshire DES to see if they do indeed take action? Even though what you've testified tonight, you know, they may just be being very generic in their comments here, so I'm just curious, from your perspective, what would be appropriate?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I want to say first that I am not testifying, and to just kind of take a step back from that, to be clear, that I am kind of reporting on a status update of what's been going on with St. Cobain. I want to be sure that the council is not taking this as testimony, because I'm acting as your legal counsel.
Wrong choice of words, and I apologize, Council.
It's okay. I am going to move pretty much now to what those different options are. The town, of course, cannot itself enforce the DES permit because it is DES's permit. So, what are your options? Your first option is, of course, to wait and see what DES will do, if anything. The downside of that is, of course, that in that interim period, and first, who knows what DES will do, and second, in that interim period, St. Cobain is operating business as usual, which comes with consequences to the town's environment, property, and people that are significant. In terms of what a reasonable time would be, I asked that question, you know, specifically, is there, can you give me any sense? And... And I did not get any feedback in terms of what I would think would be reasonable. I mean, given that there have been conversations between DES and St. Gobain about the potential for the deadline to be missed since November, and DES was certain that the deadline was going to be missed over a month ago, because they were notified before we were. I think that it would not be unreasonable for DES to be moving in very short order, given, given the significance. And that's why I said that I would have expected there to be some kind of a response along those lines of, this is a, you know, a serious situation, and DES is taking it very seriously, and we can't tell you what we're doing. But that would have given me a little more guidance. So, you know, I don't see why there wouldn't, you folks are meeting the night of the deadline. Would it be reasonable for there to be something from DES within days, in my opinion? Yes, given the amount of time that this has been outstanding. You know, normally, I would say that you could wait a few weeks, but this has been a known quantity for over a month. It's not a surprise. So that's your first option, is to wait and see. Your second option is to file in court for a temporary restraining order and a permanent injunction. It would probably be converted into a permanent injunction because, you know, the standard is the same. The advantage of that is that it's something that the town can do itself. It can be prepared relatively quickly. Of course, we can't guarantee that you would win that, but you would have a hearing on it in quite short order. That is something that the town could have an answer on in less than a month. And could have, you know, some certainty about prohibiting those uncontrolled emissions that are causing exceedances of ambient groundwater quality standards. Of course, that also comes with legal costs, which are, for that, not inordinate, but of course, that's something that you have to consider in your cost benefit analysis. And I, I would prefer not to be completely specific, but I'm imagining that the, I'm presenting these options in kind of broad brushstrokes, and that as the town council considers them, we could go into more detail in executive session to talk about legal action that you would be taking. And then the last option that could be taken is to file a citizen suit. And to say, back on the temporary restraining order and permanent injunction option, another kind of, that could be done in partnership with the MVD, perhaps, because it impacts their resources as well, and that's another way to kind of share the issue and also kind of focus the court on the significance of the impacts to the town and its drinking water and people as well.
And the jurisdiction would be Hillsborough Superior?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That would be in state court, absolutely. But that's a great question. And then to file, perhaps in partnership with a national environmental organization, maybe Conservation Law Foundation, someone like that, a citizen suit under the Clean Act, which would be in federal court to require compliance with the Clean Air Act. Though, that option takes the longest amount of time and has some ripeness issues as well, and would also be the most significant in terms of cost and in terms of timeline to prepare something like that. There is nothing stopping the town from proceeding with a restraining order and a permanent injunction while kind of moving forward on the more deliberate, kind of longer-term citizen suit action as well. Of course, these, all of these court filing options, I have been asked, to the extent the town is open to this, to share those with DES, if the town is willing to do so in advance of filing.
The restraining order would be against St. Gobain?
Yes.
Okay. But the suit might be against St. Gobain or against the state DES?
The citizen suit could be against both.
Okay. Barbara, you had a question?
Yeah, that was my question, because as you have said, and as Sarita has also declared it, is that DES probably knew about this in November. They should be ready tomorrow morning, if not tonight, at midnight, to say, "This is the action that we are proceeding with against St. Gobain." And if they do not, then they are in as much liability, in my mind, as St. Gobain is, because they are not enforcing the law, and it is their purview to do that, correct?
I agree that it is their job to enforce their own permit, and that there can be no question but that the statute and the permit require and allow only one year for construction and bringing that RTO online. There are no exemptions other than the variance, which was denied.
Anybody else? Nancy? Peter, I'm sorry. Peter, go ahead. Peter, go ahead. You're muted. We lost Peter.
We lost Peter.
I'm sure he'll call back in.
Come back, Peter.
Well, he can't even hear us now. Nancy, did you have something you wanted to add? Or you're just letting me know that Peter was?
I was just letting you know that Peter's there.
So I had kind of a prepared statement to, to amplify and add to what you folks were, were saying. "St. Gobain Performance Plastics Smokestacks and Toxic PFCs and Precursors Into the Air, Which Then Rain Down Over the Land, Drinking Water, and the People of Town of Merrimack and Surrounding Communities." "New Hampshire's Department of Environmental Services, DES, Required that St. Gobain Install a Regenerative Thermal Oxidizer, the RTO that we've been talking about, by February 11th of this year, which is today, in order to stop this contamination, Giving Them a Whole Year as Mandated by Law to Accomplish That Task." "St. Gobain Asked DES for an Additional Year of Time to Install the RTO, and DES Denied the Request Because, Quote, 'It Would Create a Danger to Public Health, Welfare, and Safety,' Unquote." And that, again, was following the law. They had to deny it, as, as we understood it, because you're not allowed to continue to, to emit dangerous toxic chemicals once it's been pointed out. And I think that's the Clean Air Act that, that proposes that. "St. Gobain Has Been Making Monthly Status Reports to DES On the Design and Construction of the RTO, Even as Recently as January 15th, Without Mentioning That They Are Behind Schedule in Any of Those Public Reports, And That They Would Miss the February 11th Deadline. And Yet, on January 11th, St. Gobain Informed the Town of Merrimack That the RTO Would Not Be Installed on Time. That February 11th Deadline, Which Was Not Extended, Has Now Passed as of Midnight Tonight. St. Gobain Cannot Legally Continue to Operate in the Town of Merrimack. Therefore, I Believe the Town Calls on DES, DES To Enforce the Terms of the Permit Issued to St. Gobain And Require That It Stop Operations Until the RTO Is Operational. To Do Otherwise Is To Allow St. Gobain To Flout New Hampshire's Environmental Laws And Is An Affront to the People of New Hampshire, Including the Town of Merrimack. The Town Assures Its Citizens That This Issue Is of Such Paramount Importance That We Will Not, We Will Take All Available Actions, Including Seeking Emergency Injunctive Relief To Protect the Town's People, Operations, and Resources." And I think that's where we need to go very soon. Peter, did you want to add in, now that you're back with us?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Joanna, and I, and, and kind of piggybacking off of Tom's statement, but a temporary restraining order or injunction, that was basically, they'd have to cease and desist operations, am I correct in that?
I don't want to be 100% specific about what relief we would ask for in that motion tonight, because I want to work with the town council on that going forward. But the thinking is that, yes, that either operations would cease or terminate or be curtailed such that uncontrolled emissions of PFCs that were supposed to be being burned by the RTO starting today and aren't, aren't instead polluting the town and its people.
Thank you. I, I think we've, I think we've made it clear through tonight's presentation that, I mean, we've been more than patient. We've stood by, we're trying to work with them. They're just not a good community partner. So I'm glad to hear that that's one of our options. Thank you.
Barbara, did I see your hand up? No, okay. Anybody else have any comments, or Nancy?
First of all, Tom, I totally agree 100% with your statement. I guess I need guidance, what kind of, I understand you don't want to have specifics discussed this evening. But would it be appropriate to have a council decision about going forward with a legal plan? And would we have to decide, would we have to decide which, like, two or three? Or just that we're going to do what, we will decide in executive session the details?
Eileen?
Since it hasn't specifically been agended that you would vote on a, a legal action, I would just give Joanna indication by consensus.
Gee, can we just nod our head?
I think it would be, in particular, if the kind of leaning is, as the chair indicated, towards seeking relief in short order, that it would be good to have guidance that we should proceed in all appropriate haste to make that happen.
I don't think we have any choice. We've been talking about this for so many months. We've talked about it last meeting, we talked about it on and off. We have to go forward as fast as we can. The RTO is going to stop them from emitting PFCs. There are other issues beyond that that we are dealing with in our appeal, but that doesn't stop the fact that the RTO is required to stop the PFCs, to stop the continued contamination of the town water and the people that live around it or anywhere around in other communities, Bedford, Litchfield, Amherst. Lunnderry, absolutely, Downwind. It just can't keep going on. It can't keep getting ignored. And if, if that means that we have to take some legal action, I think we're prepared to do that. I haven't heard anybody make any kind of an argument against it. Bill?
No, I just, to amplify, Council Harrington, I absolutely enthusiastically support your statement, Tom. I think St. Gobain has shown a complete callous disregard for this community. And I think, based on what Joanna has reported to us tonight, I think that the Department of Environmental Services not showing any sense of urgency in wanting to enforce the law is disheartening and saddening, because they are in a position to not just represent us, but represent the entire state. And I think we need to explore our legal options in that regard to encourage them. I'm not going to say enforcement, encourage them to enforce the permit.
Well, I mean, from two and three and four years ago, they haven't felt like they were supporting the people. I mean, we've been asking for help, we didn't get it. This thing went on, a lot of stuff's been in back doors, been redacted, been whatever, so that we don't know what's going on, that their deals with St. Gobain have been behind closed doors. Lately, they declined the, the extension, which I thought was a good sign, that maybe DES was now starting to support the people of the town, of the state of New Hampshire a little bit better. But we do need them to step up. And if, if we have to file a lawsuit, then, then what we'll have to do is file a lawsuit. I have no qualms with that at this point. I think we've been patient. I think you were saying, Nancy, that we've, we've been as patient as we possibly could be. And there are plenty of people in this town who believe we've been way too patient.
That's true.
Trying to work through this, and it's time to, it's time to move forward. So anything we can do posthaste to, to react to this is a good move on our part.
I will say the same thing here that I said on the phone with the attorney for DES, which is that I'm, of course, I will follow your direction, but it is a shame that the town has to do this.
And just to let the council know, tomorrow, there's a PFOA commission meeting, and both of these wonderful people are going to be presenting that to the commission.
Awesome.
Great.
Awesome.
Okay. Joanna, thank you very much, Joanna. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And the other thing I want to make is just my gratitude to the two of them. Because without the two of them, we would be floundering. We would be doing the best we could. But with your knowledge and your guidance, that's really helpful, and we appreciate that.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, thank you, Sarita and Joanna. Appreciate it. There's no other comments on this subject? We'll move on to our public hearing. The public hearing covers a lot of different things tonight. It's basically on the proposed municipal 2021, 22 operating budget and warrant articles, submitted by the town manager, Eileen Cabanel, and finance director, assistant town manager, Paul T. McCallie. The town council will hold a public hearing to discuss the following subjects. The 2021, 22 proposed municipal operating budget, including capital reserve fund expenditures, collective bargaining agreements, if any, capital reserve deposits in the general fund and capital reserve deposits in the wastewater fund, any proposed issuance of debt as follows, the pine and oil shores, roadway and drainage improvements, engineering study and recommendations, petition bond articles, if any, have been received, and other petition warrant articles, if any. These hearings are being held pursuant to the requirements of New Hampshire RSA 33:8-A, parentheses, I, and New Hampshire RSA 32:5-I, and New Hampshire RSA 21:35, and New Hampshire RSA 40:13, Roman numeral 2-B, and the Town of Merrimack Charter Article-8-3. Hi, Paul.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, come before you to discuss the public hearing for the proposed operating budget. As you know, we've had several meetings in January with departments to discuss the operating budget. And this is a quick summary of the estimated tax rate and the summary for the operating budget. I'd like to discuss the next slide, because that really goes into more detail of the general fund operating accounts was an increase of about $1,500,000. Capital reserve fund deposits increased $65,000. Other capital decreased $163,700. And road infrastructure sidewalk expenditures decreased $150,000. Those four line items really affect the tax rate, and that increase to the general fund was $1,302,019, or 4.43%. Even though what will be voted on through, through the warrant is the appropriation portion, we like to also discuss the revenue portion with the, the town, and so that they see the full picture and we're transparent as much as possible with, with everything that goes on during the budgeting process. General fund tax revenues decreased about $238,000. And fund balance, used to fund balance, increased $100,000. So the net was $138,740 of a decrease in revenue. So the total increase to be raised by taxes increased $1,440,000, or roughly about 8.2%. Also, the, the value of the town increased $58,000. And that is just on new construction alone. That is the buildings that are going on, continual buildings by Executive Park Drive, because of when the devaluations are, up by Gilbert Crossings, areas of that. So that's about $58 million that we're projecting would be an increase in value in just new construction alone.
So you said the increase was 58,000?
58 million.
58 million.
58 million, sorry.
It's just three digits. Thank you, Paul.
58 million. The decimal point threw me off there. Yeah, that's it, yes. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to discuss some of the highlights of the budget increases and decreases. Health insurance went up $32,500. highlights of the budget increases and decreases. Health insurance went up $32,599. Workers' compensation went up $25,714. Streetlights and traffic signals, $15,000. I'm not going to read all of these. I'm just going to try to highlight some of the bigger ones. Solid waste tipping fees, we talked about that. That's a combination of recycling and $54,000 in trash, which is $30,375. And then some special handling is up $16,000. Those increases total $197,327. Go ahead.
Paul, why did the traffic signals, traffic signal and streetlights go off?
Two things. They're getting older. Remember, Lori Barrett talked about, Lori Barrett talked about the junction boxes at the traffic lights, and that they're getting older, so there's more maintenance that needed to be done. So, that's why it went up.
In my mind, I was thinking differently. I was thinking electric. I don't know why, because it doesn't say anything like that. Thank you, Paul.
But that's why. And then, as with every budget, we have some staffing increases and decreases. Compensated absences went down $43,767. We have six union contracts that are getting a 2% raise. That totals $272,488. We discussed and voted on a non-union pay increase of $82,427. There were some staffing changes in the library, about $21,000. Staffing adjustment, part-time for the general government office staff was $38,000 to add a part-time person for general government office staff. Increase in NHRS was $498,000. That's a mandatory increase. The rates went up.
Wait, wait, wait. Go back. Mine doesn't line up with that. Mine says general government office staff, 498,000.
Yeah, they don't, oops, sorry. They, I don't know what the heck happened there. Sorry.
No, it wasn't good.
They, they don't line up for some reason.
Okay. Oh, all right. I see.
So, it happened again. Does this thing not touch?
No, the general government is for the staff adjustment for the 38,000. It should have been a big line shift down.
Line shift down.
Thing to the right.
Yeah, the 490, sorry about that. The 498,000 should be down with New Hampshire retirement increases.
That's Retirement Service. Okay.
Sorry about that. 53rd week of payroll, $278,000 for that. For firefighters, and paramedic wages and equipment, $460,371. There was a reduction of overtime, $109,200. Police, remember last year, we gave one and a half police officers. We have to pick up the other half year of police officer, $53,500. Same thing with the MS4. It was one and a half, half a year position was $45,000. Total increases is $1,554,701. Total of all increases is $1,700,000. Vehicle, and then we had some savings throughout the budget. Vehicle fuel, $20,000. Maintenance of vehicle and equipment, $62,000. Operating supplies, $15,297. We're going down in elections, so $14,875. Maintenance of office equipment, $24,549. Some other savings, very, you know, debt service, utilities, outside services. Total decrease was $201,309. For general fund, grand total operating, $1,550,719, which actually, as you know, when we talked about that slide before, that was the number that we were looking at as the variance. We had increased capital reserve funds of $65,000. I will discuss that further when we go over the capital reserve fund portion of the public hearing. But that was two capital reserves. That was a decrease to GIS and an increase to the fire equipment. So, that makes up that $65,000. Then we had some other capital that we took away, $37,000 for tennis courts, as one-time capital expenditures. Town hall lighting, town hall sprinklers. There was a net increase of $7,000 for highway equipment, and that was the difference between the flail mower and the two items they bought last year of $24,000 versus $31,000. The asphalt pile, old saw shed roof, $30,000. Police cruisers, town hall windows, and then the mobile radios for fire was $17,800. So, that was $163,700. Road resurfacing and sidewalks, as you know, we discussed the sidewalks at $200,000. Well, last time, we withdrew that, made a $200,000, and we increased paving 50. So, the increase was, decrease was a total of $150,000. Total expenditures was $1,302,019. If I'm going too quick, please slow me down. Sometimes I have a tendency, when I'm talking numbers, to speed up.
To get excited.
To get excited, yes. Me and all my accounting friends get excited when we talk numbers. Yes, we have, we have an exciting life. Like I talked about, we also talked about revenues and admin fees, which it charges to services like for sewer fund and police outside detail and fire outside detail. And media division went up $45,543. Decreases with state revenue with $222,000. Sell a property, $45,000. Current use of 25 decrease for a net decrease of $238,741. And then we see our usage, fund balance to reduce taxes increasing from $1,500 in 2021 to $1,650,021-22. I would like to go over, because I think this is an important point to go over with the council and the people of Merrimack, is that we are using our fund balance, we're using $942,800 to reduce taxes from the fund balance. In addition to that, we're doing capital projects in the total amount of $407,200. And the council decided early on in the budget process to offset the 53rd week of payroll using fund balance of $300,000. Some of the projects that we're doing is paving. We're throwing $240,000 into the paving line out of fund balance. The road infrastructure capital reserve fund, we're projecting $95,000 of that to be out of fund balance. We're doing the docks at Wasserman Park. That will be the completion of the dredging and the dock. So, that project will be all up and running, hopefully, when, by the summer this year. So, they'll have new docks and dredging of that. The roof and the ramp at Matt Casperius' office, the Parks and Rec Director's office, and that's the flail mower of $31,000 that we talked about in highway division equipment. So, that's a total projects of $407,200. That's one-time capital expenditures that the council has seen fit to take out of fund balance to help the town. And like I said, the total reduction in unreserved fund balance is $1,650,000. That's all I have on the budget. So, I don't know if we want to open it up for questions just about the budget, or would you like to hear about the capital fund purchases that are planned for next year, but that are not a part of the budget because of DRA, the way DRA is making us change?
Well, this is our public hearing, so I guess we should take a break here and see if there's anybody wants to ask any questions about the budget itself. Did I open the public hearing? No. So, now that we've had that presentation, we'll open the public hearing at whatever time it is. I can't even see.
Fantastic.
8:09, according to this clock. I'll use your clock next. That way, we'll move forward. We do have one person online. Nick, is that right? Is that person wanting to talk?
They would need to dial star nine.
They would have to, they've raised their hand. They would, so 288.
They'll need to hit star six.
If you want to address the council at this point. I don't have to, no. They have to.
They just need to hit star six to unmute.
Star six. So, phone number 288. If you hit star six and identify yourself, there you are.
Is this me?
This is you.
Have you, oh, okay. Are this, am I talking to Tom?
Yes, and the whole town council.
Oh, okay, good. My name is Nelson Disco, and I'm calling because I am presently the chairman of the Town Center Committee. And I'm calling to express my regret with the notion of zeroing the funds available for the Town Center sidewalk plan, which we put together a year ago in conjunction with the town council, and which represented, at that time, I felt, a commitment to do something every year going forward to try and advance the Town Center plan that was developed in 2009. This is a disappointment to see that in need of $200,000, the sidewalk program was targeted for zero. I feel if we had a shortfall, that we could have made up that, maybe by taking a little bit here, a little bit there, and at least keep the Town Center planning on the radar screen. But at zero, zero equals zero. And I'm very disappointed to see that that's now the attitude, or seems to be, the attitude of the council. Thank you very much.
I will say, Nelson, thanks for calling in. We did consider that, and it wasn't an easy option. Spending $200,000 when I feel there's a very serious concern about the economy in the next two to three to four years on sidewalks just seemed difficult. We looked at everything in the budget. Paul outlined a lot of things that weren't going to happen, or that were going to happen under special conditions. Sidewalks were not necessarily targeted just by themselves, but, and there is money in there this year for sidewalks for this current budget. So, we've started that process. What I was thinking when we, when I proposed this, was to just delay the continuation at this point, to see where the economy was going to go, what was going to happen. We're facing almost a half million dollar increase from the retirement system for our employees. Adding the firefighters and things is another almost half million dollars. We're seeing some fairly large incomes, 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars having to be raised by taxes this year. It's hard to look at those situations, especially in light of all we've been through this past year with COVID-19 and people out of work and things of that nature, and say, we're going to build a sidewalk. I understand where you're coming from. I understand the importance of them. But I just felt this year, I needed to step back a little bit and see where things are going. But there is money in the budget, in the current budget for sidewalks. We are applying for TAP grants to try and develop the sidewalk down DW Highway. So, there are a lot of things that we are moving forward on. We're just not currently funding that piece out of the town budget.
Well, can I, can I continue?
Sure.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if I was still plugged in or not.
You are.
This is my first experience with talking on my phone to the television set. But I, my thought was that if it had been left at, if it had been left at $10,000, I'd have felt better. At least I know it's there. It's something we're thinking about doing more of. And these other long-term projects with TAP grants and so on have not been fruitful for us in the past. They drag on for years and so long that the prices go up and everything. And it's, it's not something that you can bank on. And if I could see some hope, that there was some, there's support at the council level to continue the project, even if we have to skip a couple of years, at least I know it's there. We know that it's something we're working on and planning toward. That would have been a better solution, in my view, to the problems that you cite, and I know they're real.
Thanks, Nelson. I appreciate it. I think we'll definitely take it under consideration. So, we appreciate you bringing it up and talking to us about it. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Okay. Thanks, Nelson.
Thank you, Nelson.
Please do. I hope the others consider that, too.
I think we all heard you very loud and clear. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to mute Nelson. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council on the budget at this point? Seeing nobody in the room or online, we'll move forward.
I would ask that the council make a motion to move $34,539,495 to the warrant.
So moved. Do, there's a motion to move $34,535,435?
$34,539.
39.
495.
495.
To the warrant.
God, I wasn't listening. Okay. Is there any interest to act on maybe putting $10,000 towards the sidewalk fund?
It basically would be a placeholder. Would it not miss the challenge?
Yes, it would.
I don't, I don't, to be hon, I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. But I, if, I'm not going to go against the will of what we've already decided with the rest of my colleagues here. So, I guess I would like to hear what everybody's thinking about a placeholder.
Peter?
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, I thought we expressed this at earlier meetings. This wasn't an easy cut, and I respect all the work that Nelson and the rest of the Town Center Committee has done. But I think there is truly an interest in us continuing forward with this, but just not this year. I, I mean, I don't see what putting $10,000 in, you know, if the rest of the council, everybody, I, you know, expresses our interest. There is an interest in doing these projects. So, you know, I, I don't know why we need to add the $10,000 at this time.
Okay. Finley?
I think if we recall, it was actually coming out of the unreserved fund surplus. And the concern was how rapidly that was being consumed to a point of where, you know, we thought to slow the roll. Because I, Nelson knows, I agree with him. I, you know, the different sidewalks that they put forward as recommendations were virtually all good. And, but that's the reason I think that we did that, was to see how that unreserved fund surplus was being handled. Because, I mean, we just saw the numbers a moment ago. It's a lot that we've taken out of it.
Huge.
And we're still good, but I would like to see how things fall in for this coming year. And I, the placeholder would normally be used so that it's not forgotten, but I don't think that that's, that's not the plan, I think, in general, right. So, I don't know that that would be necessary for the reasons Peter just kind of spoke to.
Lon?
Yeah, somebody help me out if I'm confused. But it seems to me that considering $10,000 for sidewalks is at a point of diminishing returns in terms of what you're going to get accomplished with $10,000.
It would go into the capital reserve fund at this point for infrastructure and roads and be kind of earmarked for sidewalk development. We wouldn't expect to actually build anything with $10,000 this year. It's just like Nelson said, would be something that would allow him to, allow people to be comfortable. We're still anxious and interested in pursuing the project.
Ira, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you know, we talked about this quite a bit and debated it. And I think we, Paul and Eileen worked very hard to actually make the cuts, and we did as well, looking for the cuts, as we reviewed each line by line in the budget. So, at this point in time, to add back even $10 versus $10,000 defeats all of that work. So, I would say no. The sidewalks are a priority for many, and we know that. And we talk, I've been here, what, three years now? And we talk about it every year. And we talk about it every year. You guys, I'm sure, have talked about it, you know, much longer than that, and I don't think we've forgotten it, and I think the fact that we do talk about it for so long, you know, is testament to that, to devotion to the plan of putting in the sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion on the floor is...
It wasn't a motion, it was just a question.
What? There's a motion on the budget. There is a motion on the floor for $34,539,495.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Can I second it?
Correct.
Made by Bill and seconded by Barbara. To move it to the warrant?
To the warrant.
To the warrant. Any other discussion on that? That question was me bringing up discussion on that.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Seeing none, we have to do a roll call vote, so we'll start with Peter.
Aye.
Aye. Lon?
Wood, aye.
Barbara?
Yes.
And Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
And I vote yes as well. Finley?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes 7-0-0 to move $34,539,495. $34 million? Come on.
What's a couple of decimals?
If Paul can lose the decimals, I can too. So $34,539,495 to the warrant. Thank you.
Thank you. So, as I said before, capital reserve fund purchases, in an effort to be transparent, we'd like to show what we're planning on purchasing out of these capital reserve funds. Uh, last year, Department of Revenue Administration said that since the Town Council is agents to expend, these should no longer be put into the budget. So they should be taken up on separate meetings, and the council should vote at those meetings whether or not to expend the funds. But, once again, to be transparent, this is what we're planning on. In, uh, the computer equipment capital reserve fund, we're looking to buy Wi, uh, look at campus Wi-Fi and Microsoft 360 for a total of $56,000 for those two. Library's looking to do carpet replacement and HVAC for $110,000 combined. Looking at purchasing an ambulance for $200,000. Out of fire equipment, they're looking at an inflatable boat, computer upgrade replacement for their apparatus, SCBA filling system for a total of $131,000 for those three items. Um, traffic light preemption capital reserve for the opti-com and replacement, $5,000. Drainage improvements out of road infrastructure of $250,000. Highway equipment, looking for a backhoe, a wood chipper, a 10-wheel dump, and a trailer roller for a total of $400,000 for those items. Solid Waste is looking to replace the last live floor trailer and a plow truck, a pickup truck with a plow for a total of $105,000. Total from the general fund capital reserve, $1,257,000.
All these are expenses we expect in this upcoming budget?
Yes, these are, these are things that the council will have a chance to vote on, um, for purchase of these items.
So this is money that would come out of capital reserve funds?
Capital reserve, correct.
In the, in the upcoming budget year?
Yes, uh, '21, '22. Um, and then Wa, uh, Wastewater has a sewer infrastructure capital reserve, looking for some manhole replacements, a caterpillar loader replacement, a sewer assessment program, some, uh, work at the Pennachuck, uh, pump station and the berth station, some design work, and SCADA upgrade of $75,000 for a total of $288,020. For a grand total, capital fund reserve purchases of $1,545,000, zero, two, zero.
Okay, and this is not money raised out of taxes? This is money that has been held over or been deposited from taxes in the past?
Correct. This is money that is sitting in our, what we, what we call our savings account, that we deposit money into a savings account for, for these purposes, so this was raised by taxes, but when they come out, it's just reducing what's the balance of the capital reserve fund.
Okay. Are there any questions on those at this point? Okay, okay. No, I'm sorry. Peter? Peter, go ahead.
Paul, my only question on that, uh, last slide you just showed is regarding the wastewater, um, is, is that a, I, I guess I, I kind of, uh, I don't know if I've misinterpreted, is that a non-cost item because it's a, it's a revenue?
It's paid for by... It's, it's self, the wastewater is a self-supporting fund, however, we do put money aside out of that self-supporting fund into a, into this sewer infrastructure, so these items would be coming out of that money. So it's, it's, uh, it's a non-taxable item. It's, the money has been raised by sewer fees. Does that answer your question, Peter?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. We have no collective bargaining agreements?
Hot dog.
Because we have six, six contracts, we're still in contract with six of them, so that's a good thing.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, um, moving on to capital reserve fund deposits.
Yes.
General fund.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, as I, as I talked briefly in the, um, in the budget presentation, was the total general fund increase of $65,000 for, for capital reserve funds. Where, we estimated that we're putting in $1,880,000 into these capital reserve funds, these deposits, these savings accounts for future expenditures that we saw on the previous slide. Um, liability trust fund is a thousand dollars, uh, $10,000. Ambulance is $100,000. Communication equipment, 100. Computer, 35. Daniel Webster Highway, 50. Fire equipment, 400. Highway equipment, 400,000. Library building maintenance, 75,000. Property revaluation, which is an RSA and a stamp ma, staff, sorry, a state mandate, say that five times fast, uh, every five years, $15,000. Solid Waste disposal, $125,000. Traffic light signal preemption, 5,000. GIS, 5,000. Road infrastructure capital reserve is 545,000. Athletic field capital reserve is 5,000 for a total of $1,870,000. We also have Mill Foil, uh, aquatic species capital reserve fund, uh, for $10,000 for a total of general fund, $1,880,000, which is an increase of $65,000. And like I said before, the two items, um, fire equipment capital reserve, the council made a commitment to increase that to $400,000 this year. That's increased to $75,000. And GIS, uh, which is, uh, we've do flyovers of, of the town every so many years. We have enough money to do the next flyover, so we're reducing that to 5,000, which is a savings of $10,000, so the net is $65,000.
So this is going onto the budget, onto the warrant as a separate item?
Correct.
Because this is money raised from taxes to go into capital reserve funds?
That is correct.
And, for example, in the previous discussion, we're spending $400,000 on highway equipment.
Mm-hmm.
We're putting in $400,000 for ongoing purchases for highway equipment.
Correct.
Um, and, and so some of these numbers, I, actually, the 1.8 is slightly larger than we're spending this year because we're putting it into savings, cause we know we're gonna need various different pieces of equipment that are gonna be expensive in the future, as well as things like paving DW Highway. When that comes up, that's a big chore.
Correct.
Um, and we have to pave the piece between Greeley and Wire Road or something like that.
Uh, actually Greeley to Bedford Road.
Bedford Road, that's what I meant, sorry.
I wish it was only to Wire Road.
Yeah. Um, and that's part of the town road, so we're responsible for that, and it gets plenty of traffic and, and is not a cheap road to maintain.
No.
Um, and that's why we put money in these deposits, so that we're not coming up with, you know, half million dollar, a million dollar increases, uh, beyond that, either bonding or just straight out of the tax fund. Um, any other comments from the council? We theoretically still have the public hearing open. Does anybody wanna make a comment on capital reserve fund deposits? I don't see anybody coming forward wanting to talk about capital reserve fund deposits.
I'd ask the council to move $1,880,000 to the warrant for capital reserve fund deposit.
Seconded.
Moved by Nancy and seconded by Bill. Any other comments? We'll call for a roll call vote. Peter, you wanna lead us off to move 1.88 million?
Aye.
Aye?
Yes.
Lon?
Wood, aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Nope.
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes 7-0-0 as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is capital reserve deposits for wastewater.
Yes, uh, people were asked, "Why do I break this out?" Because one is raised by taxes, wastewater is raised by sewer fund, even because we still need to do a warrant article because we're putting money into this capital reserve fund, and by state statute, we have to do warrant articles when we deposit money into the state statute, but since this is raised by sewer funds, we do a separate warrant article for that. Uh, last year, we raised $500,000. This year, we're raising $500,000. Um, there are several projects in the next three to five years coming up that, uh, by putting this money in, we'll be able to do, and, and, uh, as I said in this slide, a couple of slides before, there's a, there's some money coming out, but there's also a project when they widen, if you ever turnpike, we need to use some of this capital reserve funds because we need to bring our sewer line from the Executive Park area to the other side of the turnpike, and they're gonna be doing that when they widen the road as well, but we have to pay for that. So that's why we're gonna put $500,000 into this account this year.
Okay. Does the council have any questions on that? Comments? Is there anybody in the public wanting to talk about wastewater capital reserve fund While, while I'm waiting to see if anybody online wants to come in, we're putting $500,000 in for future projects. We've, we've looked at this over six years, I believe, for capital reserve, capital expenditures, um, to determine how much we need to put in to keep up with, um, with our expenses without having to do a bump in sewer rates or something like that specifically for that. We're spending $288,000 in this upcoming year.
Right.
We're looking to put $500,000 in because we know we have some bigger expenditures out in the future, and if you are interested in what those are, our capital reserve plan, our CIP, um, is the discussion that goes through and talks about what our six-year plan is and where we see those expenditures going. Still don't see anybody else coming up online to, uh, to talk on the capital reserve fund budget. Um, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
Or do we, did we vote on it already?
No, we didn't vote. We do, we need a second still.
We need, we have a motion from Nancy to, to move $500,000 to the warrant for, for wastewater capital reserve fund deposits. And seconded by Barb, by Finley, sorry. Didn't notice that. Um, so the motion's on floor to move it, uh, if there's no other comments or discussions by the council. Peter?
No, I just, uh, I was gonna second from South Carolina if nobody else did.
Uh, we got it already, thanks. You wanna vote on it?
Aye.
Aye. Lon Woods?
Wood, aye.
Barbara Healy?
Healy, yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom Koenig, yes. Finley Rothausen?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Harrington. That passed a 7-0-0. I love these things. Anyway.
So before I, before I move on to the next subject, uh, just to piggyback what you said, Chairman Koenig, uh, the CIP plan is on the town website as well, so if anybody's interested to see these projects, it's underneath the Finance Department. See, it's this special tab that says Capital Improvement Plan. It's there, as well as all these budget documents that we're going over tonight will be up and operational by next Tuesday, so everybody can see what the council has voted on tonight, as well as later on with the warrant and default budget as well. So everything will be up online, so people can see.
Awesome. Thank you. Pine Knoll Shores Study Bond?
Yes.
This is an unusual one.
This is very unusual because personally, um, I would not want to bond $75,000. However, um, this project for Pine Hill, Pine Knoll Shores is 100% reimbursed up to $75,000 through the state revolving fund or for water, clean water and, uh, drinking and things of that sort. So what happens is that because it's coming through the SRF or the state revolving fund, we have to put it as a bond, cause there's no other way to do it in state statute. So there's no tax impact to do this study, however, we still need it to pass by 60% of three-fifths of the town vote on this. Actually, I knew that was gonna come up.
(laughing)
Cause I asked that same question to our attorney, cause I had him vet the warrant before I sent this along, and state statute actually changed to three-fifths, and our warrant references state statute.
Okay.
Cause our town charter says two-thirds. So that's why, but if the state is requiring it for their, to go through the state revolving fund, I'm happy with that, but...
Before, the state used to be two-thirds, and the way the charter read was that it referred to the state law. The state law has since changed to, say, three-fifths.
Okay.
There's no, there was no, I'll double check that.
Nope, I believe you.
According to the attorney, it's three-fifths, so...
That's, that's, uh...
Great. Thank you, Paul.
That's good, and, and being no tax impact at all.
Right, no tax impact at all. This is just basically a house cleaning item that we have to put as a bond.
Which will be explained in the voter guide.
Yep, the vote, the voter guide. Um, I do wanna talk about the project details, though, for, for those out there is, is, what do we get in for our $75,000? And basically, we're developing worksheets, base plans of the roads and existing drainage in the area. They're gonna perform a soil evaluation, uh, geotechnical, uh, hydraulic analysis, a storm order. They're gonna look at storm order collection and treatment alternatives, uh, roadway improvements in that area. Excuse me. Uh, conceptual plans for these improvements with cost estimates. They're gonna issue an engineering study at the very end, so that we have a document going forward that we can look at and bring forward to the council at that time, so that they can see what, in this area, what it would take, um, and this is all in conjunction with the MS4 as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, that's why this project is going on and, and as a bond.
So, so a lot of us don't get around town a lot. Can you help us understand where Pine Knoll Shores is?
It's in the westerly, northwestly corner of the town that borders up near Amherst. It's by Babu, in Babuza Lake Road area, Babuza Lake area. If you take Babuza Lake Road and if you go towards Amherst, um, right before you get to the Camps Road in Amherst, to the left there, that's the Pine...
Whole area there.
Knoll, that's all that area in there. It's, uh, it leads right into the lake area.
Okay, great. So it's up in the vicinity of Babuza Lake?
Correct.
All those streets.
All those streets.
All camps at one point.
All those camps and, that were put in there back in the very early days?
Mm-hmm.
And whatnot. So this'll help to understand how the, the roads and drainage and any other stuff involved in that area could be dealt with.
Correct.
It won't do that work for $75,000.
No, it won't, but it would give us a plan.
But it'll give us estimates and a plan to work forward with. Okay? We need a motion on that? Yeah, we do. Some moved?
Um, it looks like Peter's got a question.
While, while we have that motion on the floor, let's see if there's anybody from the public that wants to talk to that. Peter?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Tom. Um, I just, I, I know we revisited this with a couple of residents live up by the lake, and I think this is a, a step in the right direction that will, uh, ultimately, uh, help us going forward, no matter what happens, whether it's next year or 10 years down the road. Um, it's, it's, it's what needs to be done, and I certainly support this.
Great.
And if I could just add one thing before the vote? We have talked to the Babuza Lake Association up there, and they're fully involved with what's going on, and they're in support of us moving forward with this study as well.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Nobody from the public has shown up to, uh, ask to be able to speak on this. Nobody in the audience appears to be headed for the mic in a great rush, so we'll move to a vote, um, on moving this $75,000 bond article to the warrant. Peter?
Aye.
Lon Woods?
Wood, aye.
Barbara Healy?
Healy, yes.
Bill Boyd?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom Koenig, yes. Finley Rothausen?
Aye.
And Nancy Harrington?
Yes.
That passed a 7-0-0. So petition... So petition bonds, we didn't get any in time to be able to advertise for this meeting.
No, we didn't get any petition bonds.
Oh, no petition bonds at all?
Right.
And then other petition warrant articles?
If I can, please. The town of Merrimack is a charter community. And in our charter, we have a section of our charter that basically states that petition warrant articles for money get put on to the ballot. If you want to do a petition warrant article, we're going to be talking about next week. It's a citizens initiative, which needs 50 registered voters and there are certain timelines and dates for public hearings and action for the council. But because we're, the charter, our charter states that all, only money warrant articles should be on the ballot. That's why we have to hold that special public hearing next week to discuss a non-money warrant, petition warrant article that came in. And it's really not even a petition warrant article in the sense of a petition warrant article. It's a, it's a petition initiative, citizens initiative to the town council. And at that time, the town council has three options and we'll discuss those next week. But just want to say, that's why we're not discussing that tonight for the people who did sign that petition warrant article and thought it would be on tonight. It's not there because it's really a citizens petition moving forward.
Finley?
And, and just, I guess for a point of information, if you wanted to take it directly to the ballot, there's a way to do that as well in the charter.
Yes, I believe you need over 500 people.
Yes, I think it is 500. The 50 signatures gets it, so we have to make an action. And those are the three that you will talk about at the appropriate time.
Correct, next week. And then, because I have the stage, Wednesday, March 10th, 2021, is the deliberative session. And then our annual voting day is Tuesday, April 13th, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Currently, we are doing this in person. So the deliberative session is in person, annual voting day is in person. We ask people to wear masks at these events. So like they would if they came to town hall or any school building, we ask you to wear your mask, please.
Right, we'll be following all the protocols put forth by CDC, et cetera, to keep everybody as safe as possible, the staff as well as the citizens.
Correct.
So when you're in line, try to keep a little distance between you and the next person to sign up, realize that we need to keep things clean. And so we're going to be doing everything we can to keep things sanitized and safe for everybody. But the deliberative session will be March 10th. Just to repeat. Wednesday, March 10th, at the Upper Elementary School. And the voting day is April 13th, at our three polling sites. At least that's the plan today. And I expect it to stay that way, but we'll, we'll know in the future. Finley?
My question was about the deliberative session. Lynn had come and spoken to us a few, a couple of weeks ago about the seating arrangement she planned. With people socially distanced, as we would be up at, up at the wet turn podium, rather, I guess, we, you know, are people allowed to take their mask off at that point as long as they're sitting in their places? Do you know that? I can find out from when later.
I don't know what Lynn's plan is to make a final announcement on that.
But I do believe it's mask on because we'll be indoors, so masks will be on.
Because you're being in a closed space and.
Okay, so I'm sitting up in my seat, I'll be masked, is what you're telling me?
No, the council, it's going to look a lot different, honestly, this year than any years past. There's going to be tiers on the, on the stage. I believe below, on the floor, we're going to have a riser and I believe that's where myself, Eileen, and the town attorney will be. Then they'll be on the stage, there'll be a tier which will have three, three or four counselors and then there'll be another tier. And we'll make sure that everybody is definitely more than six feet apart so that the town council can remove their mask. But if you're in the audience, we're asking you to keep your mask on.
Much like we see here in the, in the meeting room here.
Correct.
And we appreciate people doing that.
And that's all that I have for this segment.
Okay, so we don't need to take any more votes. So we'll close our public hearing at whatever time it is. 8:45, thank you. Which brings us to legislative updates from state representatives and/or senators. Maureen, did you have something?
And now everybody leaves. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. You are dealing with a lot of very important and very complex issues and certainly appreciate all the time you put in to serve our town. I do have, for the record, first of all, my name is Maureen Mooney. I'm a state representative here in town. I did submit four items. Quite a bit is going on, as you can imagine, in the State House, slowly but surely, things are starting to move. And so I just wanted to highlight four areas relevant to Merrimack. Also here tonight, I know Representative Bob Healy has some remarks and State Senator Gary Daniels. So first, in my report to you, my legislative update is House Bill 478, of which I'm the prime sponsor. You may recall, two weeks ago, I sent you a very descriptive detail of what that bill entails relative to treatment of PFAS contaminants in the drinking water of the Merrimack Village Water District. There's been some updates since I last updated you two weeks ago. For starters, the hearing that was scheduled for February 17th has been postponed. I don't know the hearing date yet. In addition to that, the committee that the bill was originally assigned to, Resources, Recreation and Development, the bill has been reassigned. It's been taken out of Resources, Recreation and Development and placed into the Judiciary Committee in the House. Again, with a hearing date to be determined. Once I know that date, since I'm the prime sponsor, I'll introduce the bill and I will certainly let you know as soon as I know as to that date. So in my report, I have included the email address that would reach each member of the House Judiciary Committee. I know you have this bill, you have some further business on this bill to discuss later on in your agenda. So you may find that email address quite useful.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, item two. I want to bring this bill to your attention, very important to Merrimack. Prior to the passing of Speaker Hinch, he asked that I work with the Citizens for Clean Water on two water-related initiatives. This bill, House Bill 236, is the second initiative. It is to create a statute of limitations by which to bring civil actions based on damages relative to PFAS and so on. So the time limit is six years from the discovery of the action and so on. The details are all there. In fact, in my report to you, each of these bills are hyperlinked. So you can click on it, hopefully you all received it by email and see the full text. That bill has also been assigned to the House Judiciary Committee. And the hearing is coming up quite soon, on Tuesday, February 16th, at 10 o'clock. The prime sponsor is Representative Vale from Nashua. I am a co-sponsor, Representative Healy is a co-sponsor. And so I would ask that you support that bill. I believe Representative Healy tonight will walk you through just the ease of which it is to sign up in favor, in support or opposed of bills online, now with all of the remote action that's taking place. So that is certainly one for Merrimack. Certainly one that the Merrimack Citizens for Clean Water have requested. And so we are all looking forward to that hopefully passing. Again, the hearing, House Bill 236, Friday, excuse me, February 16th at 10:00 a.m.
May I ask a question, Maureen? It's just, I'm just having difficulty, create a statute of limitations. To me, that's counterintuitive. So maybe I'm understanding it incorrectly. Once you, once contamination has been determined, you, you have six years in order to do something, right?
Correct.
How is that an advantage?
Take a civil action.
To me, that would be protecting the.
The polluter.
The polluter.
Well, I can say that.
Unless I'm misunderstanding, and that's why I'm asking the question. Because right now, there is no statute of limitation, which would be beneficial to the person who's being polluted, the victim. Where if you're putting a statute of limitation on, you're saying, okay, after six years, they're clear, they can't do anything. Is that correct?
Nancy, excuse me.
Paul?
Yeah, statute of limitations for lawsuits are usually three years in the state of New Hampshire. What this will do is extend it to six years.
That's it, thank you.
I don't know if pollution follows those, but that's normal, what we get.
Well, and that's a big issue with this bill is specific to PFAS contaminant and the causes thereof.
So it actually extends it?
True, and it, and it specifies it as well. Essentially creating a class of individuals who are seeking restitution.
Excellent, thank you, that answers my question. Thank you, Paul.
Well, I was going to ask that same question, so thank you for asking that.
I thought it was missing something, yeah.
Okay, good, so it's, okay.
All right, my third, my third item, I'm going to actually defer to Senator Daniels. He's sponsoring Senate Bill 117, which is the removal of the tolls at Exit 10. And then my last item, just as an informational piece, but quite significant, is that House Bill 20, which has become a real signature piece of legislation in the House this particular session relative to Education Freedom Account Program, has been renamed in honor of Merrimack's own, the late Speaker Dick Hinch. As a legacy bill in Concord, that is an enormous tribute and I wanted the town of Merrimack to know and to certainly be quite proud. So that concludes my legislative update for today. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Maureen, appreciate it. Great to see you tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. For the record, my name is Gary Daniels. I'm the State Senator for District 11, I live in Milford. It's my pleasure to be here again with you and to give you the first update from the Senate. Understanding that we're not that, that far into the session yet, about a month and, a month and a half. And we're all still struggling with this thing called Zoom.
I know that.
But I will let you know that, you know, we have a chance to put in for committees when we get elected. I have been appointed as the Senate Finance Chair. I'm also appointed to Ways and Means and the Capital Budgets. So, so I'm going to be all, all about money, which is same as it was when I was there two years ago. I've also been appointed to the Business Finance Authority Board of Directors, the Capital Budget Overview Committee, the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals, Fiscal Committee, Joint Committee on Legislative Facilities, and the State Retire, Retiree Health Plan Commission. So I've got a little bit to do.
You're a busy guy, yeah.
Just to go over some, some of the bills and some of the, the things that I would like to try to accomplish over, over the course of the term. Senate Bill 135 deals with educational aid. I'm a co-sponsor of this. Cities and towns would receive educational financial assistance from the state, to reduce the local cost of education. Merrimack's share of that funding would be $16,605,473. And that's a, it's an increase of $685,900 over the current law estimates. Let me say what the bill does. Evidently, when they figure out educational funding, they go back to the average membership attendance of the previous year. But since 2020 was an odd year where much was done virtually, this bill allows you to go back to 2019 and take the higher of the two in figuring it out. So that's how you end up with the $685,900 more than you would have if we used the 2020 numbers. I, along with Senator, Democrat Senator Perkins Cuoco from Portsmouth, have introduced Senate Bill 95, which would make virtual meetings a permanent option for local municipalities that have the technical capability. This bill is a win-win for communities as it enables governing boards to better educate their constituents on multiple issues. And it enables the public to more easily participate in proceedings. By making virtual meetings as a permanent option, we'd also allow for the following. Disabled constituents have better access to hearings. We mitigate the risk during harsh weather by not having people out on the roads. And we reduce overcrowding of hearing rooms. If you happen to see the Concord Monitor yesterday, Durham Town Manager Todd Seelig, Todd Seelig had a nice editorial about Senate Bill 9095 in there. So it's a lot of what you're doing now with the, we call it a hybrid thing, where you can do a telephonic if you've got the cable access TV. We're doing, we're doing Zoom in Milford. I'm on, I'm chairman of the Board of Direct, sure, excuse me. I'm chairing all the selectmen there. And, and we're doing, we're doing Zoom meetings, but we're also doing hybrid meetings. We've kind of gone, bounced back and forth as town hall, town hall is open and then, and then closed. But what we have seen is selectman meetings where we normally would have about five attendees grow to an average of about 40 to 50 people coming in every, every time we have a meeting. School board, we've had up to 150 people coming in. So we see this as a, as a good thing. The bill leaves it up to the governing body to decide whether you want to use it or not. So it's totally enabling. Under educational alignment, this is, this is something that I really wanted to try to focus on over the next two years because past trends have shown that, that there's an educational misalignment. Such that many high school graduates entering colleges have needed to take remedial courses in order to reach that educational level expected by the colleges. Likewise, college graduates need to achieve an educational level expected by the business community or the career path of that graduate can be delayed or curtailed. One of the initiatives I've undertaken this term is to better align these entities so that high school, so that the high school education parents fund through their property taxes is sufficient for their child to enter college without having to take remedial courses to attain the knowledge for lacking courses that college may expect. Likewise, if colleges understand the needs of the business community and are willing to work with the state to, to adjust the existing 130 job training programs that we have to meet those business needs, we have a better chance of taking that quality education that New Hampshire offers and keeping it in the state to the betterment of all. Maureen had mentioned the Merrimack tolls. Once again, I have introduced the bill to remove the tolls at Exit 10. That is Senate Bill 117. The hearing on that bill will be next Tuesday, the 16th, at 2:00 p.m. in Senate Transportation. One of the other things I am doing in regard, in regards to the highways too, is I'm pursuing a suggestion that came from one, one of your Merrimack residents. And I've been actively talking with the Department of Transportation about the possibility of privatizing the toll administration buildings that were left at Exit 12. It would cost the state about $150,000 to take, to remove those buildings when Route 3 is widened. If there is interest from the private sector in, in transforming these buildings into private businesses, and the details can be worked out with DOT, not only would the state save $150,000 in demolition cost, but it would also generate revenue from the sale of these buildings. And Merrimack would benefit from a new source of property taxes as well as other potential revenue depending on the business that would be established there. And then finally, Mr. Chairman, so that I might, might more thoroughly be involved in helping to find a solution to Merrimack's problems with PFAS, I requested appointment to the Commission on the Environmental and Public Health Impacts of Perfluorinated Chemicals created by House Bill 737 in 2019 and have been assigned to that committee, which will meet tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m.
Awesome.
So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate you coming and telling us all this.
See you tomorrow morning.
That should be a fun meeting. Hi, Representative Bob Healy. Tuesday is going to be extremely busy. What I gave you was the link actually to. Um, what I gave you was the link actually to sign in, even if you want to just, uh, you don't have to testify, but you can actually just go in and just choose whether you want to support or not support the bill. And since they're all for Merrimack, I would expect you to support them. Um, so at 9:00 AM, they have HB 135, which was, we'll not mention, it's another one that, uh, Jeanie Nodder actually, and it pertains to parties who are found to be responsible for private well-drinking water contamination, being financially responsible for a timely connection to municipal water supplies, immediate provision of bottled water, and connection, if the connection cannot be made within six months. And they, they will, at that point, have to install a full-house water system. Uh, 236 is the one right after that that Maureen, uh, mentioned. That's at 10:00 AM. And at 11:00 AM, Rosemary Rung has one that pertains to medical monitoring and allows the claim for medical monitoring. So that was another one of the other bills that, uh, so it's 9:10, 11:00. So if, just stay on the, uh, the Zoom call if you wanna listen to it. The, there were a couple that, of bills that did go through my committee, it was the Resources Committee, and the, we passed the committee to add Londonderry to our committee for the 737 tomorrow. So that one should be going up in front of the House shortly, and I'm sure that won't get passed. The other one that was killed, um, was inexpedient to legislate was, um, I think it was Rosemary put this one in about, yes, it was Rosemary Rung, putting in about the tolls probably being at Exit 8. And she said she wanted the tolls to be studied to be put in a place in town or in the state that would have the most traffic. And unfortunately, that one got killed 20 to 1, so most likely, we're looking at probably Exit 8, like they planned or along in a 10-year plan. So, that's all I had.
Well, can you just repeat what you just said, that last part? Most likely what?
Exit 8 will probably have the toll, like they did, they have planned in the 10, 10-year plan.
Okay.
Not guaranteed. Still, still, still negotiation.
Well, because you brought it up, Bob. Instead of doing that, I really would encourage the legislature to contemplate better ways to fund their highway system. The most inefficient, well, actually, was the most efficient way to collect revenues was a turnpike toll system. Now, I'm sure you're just gonna do it, the open road tolling, and send me a bill because I don't have a transponder. I would much prefer you find a more equitable way to, that gets everybody across the state evenly for their road use, because it's just, no matter, I knew it was gonna happen. I mean, I, I'm not surprised.
Still not guaranteed. It's just one of the things that, when they killed this bill, that was one of the things they did bring up.
Right. Well, and I do appreciate the removal of two of our three toll booths in town. I absolutely do, because I just could never envision it happening. Um, and so, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna be, you know, beating up on everybody because of that. I do appreciate it, but find a better way, and that would be my recommendation to the, you know, to my representative delegation, uh, to in fact, try that path before we do set up another system that is unfair.
The other thing I did wanna bring up, I, I know that you brought up the highways too. I was originally on the highways committee. The, they are gonna put up, they, they do have a bill in Bedford to put up a wall that you guys have all been talking about on, on, you know, for sound barrier, in Bedford, right off of Route 3. And this was even before, it's getting, it's getting widened. And there's only five houses on that road, so I think they set precedence at that point, if they do.
Well, and that got killed.
Did it get killed?
Yeah, it got killed.
Okay. I didn't hear that yet.
All right. Okay. I agree with you, Finley. Peter? Nope, you're still muted. You're still muted, Peter.
Almost as bad as Boyd.
Peter, can you, there we go. You're good. Go.
Thank you. While, while the Senator and our, our representatives are there, um, I appreciate Senator He, Representative Healy, um, mentioning the, the barriers, because we have, um, a, a new group of, uh, representatives and a new senator, and I'd like him to carry the torch on protecting Merrimack's neighborhoods. Uh, you know, if I recall right, um, there was a significant number of neighborhoods that I think the council, we agreed, should have some type of barrier, sight or sound. Um, and the state, DOT basically said no. So moving forward as this goes, uh, we'd ask you to, I would ask you to just, uh, you know, keep your, keep an eye on this, and, and I think you're probably gonna hear more from the town. Uh, and also, uh, you heard, you heard the discussion regarding the DES's response, upcoming response, and, uh, how soon it might happen. And I'd ask you all to, obviously, and I think you will, you, you certainly sound like you're all involved in it, is be, be aware and be very concerned, because, um, you know, there's a lot of questions raised about why it's taking so long for certain things, and that this, this organization, DES, uh, represents us, so, and is out to protect us. So, um, just, just a couple of reminders on that. And, and I appreciate the tolls at 10 going away. Um, I'm somewhat skeptical, but I hope so. And then I wonder where we're gonna go. I agree with Finley, there's gotta be a better way. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it, Bill? Oh, Bill, sorry.
Representative Healy, thank you for, for your, for your update. I guess what I would say to you based on, I, I only know about the Bedford experience because one of those five houses happens to be, uh, the parents of a good friend of mine. And she actually outreach to me, and we had a long conversation about that. And I actually explained to her what Counselor Albert alluded to regarding Mallard Point and the, the neighborhoods that are across the street from Mallard Point. I, I would ask you and Representative Mui and Senator Daniels and the rest of our legislative delegation to continue to be vigilant with the Department of Transportation. Their, their level of tone deafness, this community has suffered through, suffered through. And I've been on this, I've been on this board now, it'll be 10 years in April, 10 years in April. We have suffered through, you know, a, a level of tone deafness from the Department of Transportation that is just unconscionable from where I stand. So the more pressure that can be placed on addressing neighborhood needs, because, you know, the, the reality of, of this widening of the turnpike is, is they're probably gonna get off, they're probably gonna be coming down DW Highway once that construction starts, and barriers are going to be the most effective means to, to mitigate the traffic noise. I don't think it's an unreasonable request. And that's, it's, it's the level of arrogance that I just don't, I just don't understand from them as to why they, they just see it as unreasonable. So I, I would ask, and please communicate this to the other members of our legislative delegation, that we need to be vigilant in, in keeping DOT honest, not just with the widening, but to making sure that they're addressing neighborhood concerns, because they're not. They really aren't. Thank you.
Actually, Representative Blaisak, Blaisak from Merrimack is actually on the Highway Committee too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yeah. Just a little more on that topic. What I would like to see in the future, when the next session rolls around to submit LSRs, is that one gets submitted that says DOT does not do a highway expansion without adding the funding for barriers in the budget for that expansion. Because that's the excuse we got when we brought it up, was that there was no money for barriers. So it's part of the project. It's like you're gonna build a building and no windows? Put the budget in. And I, if we have to mandate it by law, then so be it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a little bit of history on that, uh, sound barriers, because I worked for two terms with Senator Andy Sanborn in trying to get that up there. And we fought with DOT for, for both of those terms. Each time they would go back and said, because of the federal involvement in, in that project, that, that there was a formula that had to be filled out for, for density, residential density, and that that didn't meet the standard. Um, but, you know, taking, taking Counselor Healy's, um, ideas going forward, I, I think we could probably, we could, we could probably go beyond whatever the federal standard is. Uh, you know, and we would do that. Uh, but I think at this point in time, we also have a couple different shots, because that, that expansion, as I understand it, is about three years away. We also, we also have the 10-year plan coming through. And, uh, you know, I've got a, I've got a note here to talk to Counselor Wheeler, because the 10-year plan starts in the governor's office. And if we get that included from the beginning, then you've got a much better chance of it staying in for, for the duration. And then the, the last thing I wanted to ask is, who is the DES contact you have been working with?
Oh, Sarita?
Oh, she's our, yeah, Sarita.
The DES contact we've been working with, or you've been?
For PFAS?
Yeah. I, yeah, for Saint Gobain and PFAS. Catherine Beam, or?
No, it's not my name, sir.
Okay.
So the air permit is, Kathy Beam was the permit writer, Craig Wright is the division director.
Sarita, you need to come up to the mic so that it can be heard.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So for the air permit, the person that we deal with on the permit is Kathy Beam. The division director is Craig Wright. Mike Wimsat, Wimsat is the division director of the Waste Management Division. So his division has been dealing with the investigations of the groundwater contamination and other related things associated with that. Then, um, the water division is dealing with the development of surface, surface water standards. Um, and that person's name evades me, so, sorry.
Give it a good place to start. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Sarita. Appreciate it. Talk about catching you on the side there.
See, I'd have been, if I weren't Sarita's, I'd be dosed.
Thanks very much to our state reps and Senator for their reports and their updates, and keeping it pertinent to Merrimack. We've had some that have gone a little stray at times. Anyway, that brings us to the town manager's report. Town manager's missing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one, one item, and, uh, the Merrimack Police Department, uh, once again, is participating in the Special Olympics, uh, DEP, and officers allowed to grow beards during the month for a donation to Special Olympics. Female employees are also participating by putting red streaks in their hair, which is the color of Special Olympics. So if you see the officers out and they have beards, or the female officers have streaks in their hair, it's all for a good cause. It's all for Special Olympics.
Awesome. That's great. Glad to hear that's going on. How, do you know how long that lasts?
Uh, for the whole month of February.
Okay. Great. I, that's great to hear. So where am I at? Consent agenda. We don't have any. Old business. We don't have any, because we moved it up to a special appointment. So hopefully we can move along a little more quickly. Uh, new business, consideration of a letter of support of House Bill 478, which was just talked about recently, submitted by the Council Chair Tom Kanig and Vice Chair Bill Boyd, Town Council to consider supporting HB 478, HB 478, an act relative to the treatment of PFAS contaminants in the drinking water of the Merrimack Village District. This bill requires Saint Gobain Performance Plastics to pay for the remediation of water in certain wells in Merrimack that it contaminated. And I thought we had a letter.
Do you have the letter in there?
I have a letter. Okay. So we wrote a letter to discuss. And, um, we were planning to send it to the, uh, the, some committee that you've just told me is, is changed to the Judiciary Committee. So we'd have to, we'd have to modify the, uh, the address on this, because I don't think Edward Gordon is the right guy anymore. Is that right? Or did you update it? You did update it. So it is updated to Edward Gordon, Committee Chair, and to Mark McLean, Vice Chair, RE HB 478 comment letter. Um, and this is the proposal, and I'll read it into the record. Dear Representatives Gordon, McLean, and the members of the Judiciary Committee, thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on HB 4, HB 478, which seeks to require Saint Gobain Performance Plastics, SGPP, to pay for the remediation of spec, of specific contaminated well water in Merrimack. The town of Merrimack, hereby called Town, is deeply concerned about the perfluoroctanoic acid, PFOA, and perfluoroctane sulfonate, PFOS, contamination in our environment. I'm sure that you and your committee members are quite familiar with the extensive contamination issues that have been experienced in Merrimack, Litchfield, Bedford, Amherst, and the Peace Trade Port areas. The town remains vigilant and focused upon the safety of our citizens, and continues to make every effort to keep abreast of the myriad complex issues related to this extensive contamination problem. Sound, science, research, and data analysis has been and should continue to be the guiding criteria for regulations and remediation. We have attempted to work with our residents who have been affected, the Department of Environmental Services, DES, Merrimack Village District, MVD, and SGPP, to determine and implement remediation for the continuing contamination issues. We have been dealing with this pollution since it first came to light on February 29th of 2016. Currently, the residents do not see an end in sight to the pollution issues caused by SGPP to our drinking water. However, we believe that the language in HB 478, which is currently in the Judiciary Committee, provides needed remediation for the citizens of Merrimack. Fundamentally, this bill would require SGPP to fix what they broke, the contamination of MVD wells 4 and 5.
Move approval.
Please feel free to contact me at the town number if you have any questions or comments on the information provided in this letter. So a motion was made to approve the letter to be sent and seconded by Barbara. Is any other comments? Say none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, is, is Peter still with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's hanging in there.
Good for you, Peter. I, I covered you up on the screen, so I didn't see you. Sorry. Um, okay, so we'll go for a will-call vote. Um, Peter?
Most definitely, and I.
Lon?
Would J.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. Finley? And Nancy?
Yes.
So that's, uh, six, uh, 7-0-0. And that's gonna be signed by myself as Town Council Chair. Okay?
We'll get that ready for signature this week and, or you?
It's ready for signature now, yes?
Yeah, well, I don't, did you put it on letterhead?
Yeah.
Oh, yep. So you can sign it. We'll send it out.
Okay. And we don't know when that is gonna come up for a vote, but, or a discussion, but you'll let us know so we can.
Correct. Your date to be announced.
Paul, thank you for working on the letter.
You're welcome, but thank you, Council Harrington, for helping me out.
Oh, I apologize, Council Harrington. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I'm a, I, I like grovelling. I do it well.
No, no, just.
Business item number two. Capital Reserve Fund withdrawal request for the purchase of a replacement vacuum truck, submitted by the Assistant Public Works slash wastewater director, Sarita Croce.
That's why she's stuck here.
The Town Council to consider the withdrawal request of $377,129 from the Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a planned replacement of wastewater treatment plant sewer vacuum truck, which is used for the maintenance and cleaning of the town's collection system.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to just give a little leadway into this.
Okay.
This is a project, like we talked about before, that we have been saving for, this vehicle. We've been saving for it over a number of years. Um, Sarita will get into, uh, the, the years of, uh, the truck we're replacing. And once again, this has been set aside through user fees in the Capital Reserve Fund deposits for this specific purpose.
Great. Thank you.
So first, I want to apologize that I messed up so much when I came up to talk about Saint Gobain. So I wasn't. Well, I didn't address your names correctly, so my apologies for that.
We really noticed that.
They forgot about that. I'm just very sorry.
I put you in your name just about every time, so.
I get tongue-tied every time, so I apologize. So, and then I just, I also wanted to say, and, and I know Eileen has left, or, or, uh, the town manager has left, but she has been a huge, um, asset in this, and she has been a huge leader in driving us and helping us get to where we're going. So I just wanted to make sure I said thank you to her also for everything that she does, because she spent countless, countless number of hours helping with all of this. Okay, so now back to the business at hand. Um, the vacuum truck that we're planning to replace is 15 years old, and it's you.
How many?
The vacuum truck that we're planning to replace is 15 years old.
15. Okay, thank you.
And it's, um, it's a truck that- And it's, it's a truck that is vital to our operations at the wastewater treatment plant. We use the truck to actually clean our sewers. We also vacuum out grease and other things from our sewers. We use it at the plant also to clean out our contact chambers, which are the very last chambers before wastewater or the water that has been treated is discharged to the river. So, it ensures that salas don't get out. As part of the truck, you have a couple of different components, one of which is a tank that holds fresh water, or water that you can use to actually jet a clogged sewer line. And then a vacuum component of it that can suck everything out, so that you can go back and you can discharge it at the wastewater treatment plant. We had allotted $440,000 in the budget last year to, to purchase this vehicle. And we had bids sent out last year, and I think it was November of last year? Yeah, November of last year. The lowest bid was for a camel truck, it was $377,129. So, I am respectfully requesting permission to withdraw that amount from the Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of this sewer truck.
Are there any questions? Barbara?
Does that include a maintenance plan?
So, we do have a full maintenance plan for the truck, and we have, depending on what component we're dealing with, it either has anywhere between a one- and five-year warranty.
Okay, thanks, Sarita.
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sarita, on the Finance Department form, you have a total price of $369.7?
Yes.
And they're quoting $377, just can you clarify the difference?
So, the difference with that is we actually asked, requested to add two components to the truck. One was an ejector plate. So, the truck, the way it's designed, it will not rise the way a normal truck will rise, and this is so that we can address any tipping issues with the truck. And what it has inside is a plate that pushes the waste out, so it helps empty the truck of the waste. And the second one is to make the body of the truck or the rear axle of the truck heavier, so that we can handle the weight, and we won't have to repair it as quickly for damages associated with heavy materials. And I am not a mechanic, so that was about all I know. I just want to let you know.
You did very well.
I just want, I want to point out that she's also getting a $30,000 trade on the old vehicle.
Yes.
So, I think, I was really impressed with, with that as well. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
And we have just one vacuum truck, or do we have two?
One.
Just one?
Yes.
So, if this one was out of service, you're in trouble, and we need to get it repaired, or whatever, quickly, or? How, how frequently does this get used?
It gets used several times a week, depending on, on the time of year. In the summertime, it'll be used up to four days a week. In the wintertime, it'll be used less. But I do want to talk about the existing truck. So, the existing truck, in the last five years, we have spent probably close to $30,000 repairing it. And this truck is on its last legs. It's not operating. Most recently, one of the pumps on the truck that jets out the water wasn't working. And every time it goes down, we're in a situation that if there is a big problem in town, we can't handle it, or we have to call a contractor or one of our septic haulers to help us with the issue. So, it is rather important that we replace it at this point. It's be, well beyond its useful life.
And in past, before we had this, we just would rent a truck as we needed it, or?
We actually have had a truck, I think, for some time now. Prior to the, the Vaccon, which we have now, we had a Vector truck. So, and I think we've had trucks for, and Paul, you're going to have to help me, 30 years?
Roughly.
Yeah, 30 years.
That's fine. I thought I remembered discussions when I first got on the council about Vector trucks and, and things like that, and I thought it was kind of weird stuff to be discussing. But if we've had them all that time, then it probably wasn't as much as I was thinking. Are there any other questions? Seeing none? Is there a motion to approve the withdrawal from the Capital Reserve Fund?
Seconded.
So, moved by Lon and seconded by Bill to, to approve the $377,129 request? We'll go to a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Lon?
Would, aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
So, that passes seven zero zero. Thank you very much.
So, I have more requests now?
You're not going to get to leave, huh?
No.
So, number three, the Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request for a Replacement Grinder for a main pump station, submitted by the Assistant Public Works and Wastewater Director Sarita Croce. The Town Council to consider the withdrawal request of $63,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a replacement grinder for the main pump station to cut up wipes and rags.
As you all know, we have a six, a $22.62 million project to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant. Yay! And as part of the project, we're installing a new screener, and that's going to be used to deal with all these multitude of flushable wipes. And just to let you know that the wipes that we showed you, I think it was two years ago, it's still intact. And it's on Kyle's bookshelf, and it, and it hasn't degraded yet. So, the flood, that particular building, it won't be online for at least two years. And the grinder that we have in place now is not only well beyond its useful life, it's failing. We get anywhere from five to maybe eight calls a month for operators to go in at night to try and, and address grinder issues, because it completely fails. And these on-call, these call-ins are become, are more severe every time an issue occurs. So, for example, I think it was about a month ago, we had an issue with the grinder, and we ended up having to go in and replace components of it, and that cost us about $3,000. I actually have a picture of the existing grinder, and it doesn't look pretty, clearly. But, and, but it doesn't really show you how poorly and how badly corroded the, the actual grinder is. So, the housing that holds the cutting stack, so you have to imagine, you have a cutting stack inside the grinder, and you have a housing around it. That is completely corroded. So, that is going to break apart pretty much any day at this point. We, we're holding it together with what I like to say Scotch tape and chewing gum. And because of the timeline to bring the new, the, the new climber screen online, and also the fact that when the new climber screen needs to be serviced, and that's probably going to be monthly, or if it needs repair, we're going to have to have a Plan B to deal with these wipes. So, this grinder would be used for the foreseeable future. And we would, when we bypass the screen, we would use, we would put the grinder, we'll have the grinder in place to actually address the issues. So, it just so happens, we got really lucky, that by, with the purchase of the new vacuum truck, we're under that budget by $62,871. And we happened to get a quote, just to get an idea of how much it would cost to purchase a grinder, and the quote we received was $62,083, and that will include installation as well. But we understand that, I just want everybody to let you know, is that if you approve us to, to withdraw this money, we are planning to obtain competitive bids for the purchase of a grinder. So, hopefully, the purchase price comes in lower than what we think it might.
Great. Any questions? Or comments? So, we'll look for a motion to authorize withdrawal of $63,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund to purchase a replacement grinder.
Still moved, seconded.
Moved by Barbara and seconded by Bill. You're just too slow there, Peter, other end of that long channel there.
I tried.
We'll, we'll look directly at you next time. If there's no further discussion, we'll go to a vote. Peter?
Aye.
And we'll turn it around. Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Healy?
Healy, yes.
And Lon Woods?
Would, aye.
Awesome. That passes seven zero zero as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarita.
Sarita, thank you. Have a great week.
See you tomorrow, Sarita. Thanks for your long evening with us. His own cleaning wipes. I don't think so. So, up next is a review of the 2021-2022 Default Budget. Submitted by the Town Manager Eileen Cabanelle and Finance Director Paul McCauley. The Town Council will review the 2021-2022 Default Budget. This would be the budget that would go in place automatically should the, the budget we've been proposing and discussing fail at the ballot box. But I think we'll have one more chance to, to address money items or something in the future, if we decide to go that way.
Correct, and that would be at the deliberative session. Money, money, money.
No, but I mean, if it failed.
Oh, yes, if it failed.
If it fails, we could define another voting day to readdress the, the money line of the budget, but.
That, that is correct, I'm sorry.
But this would be the default.
Correct. With SB two, it's state statute says that you have an operating budget, and with that operating budget, if the voters vote no, then the towns would be stuck, saying, okay, what's our operating budget? It's not zero. So, with SB two, they put the law in a place about calculation of default budget. And there are special rules that go along with the default budget calculation. You take the prior year budget, which is the general town operation budget from last year, 2000, in 2021 budget, Article Three was $33,055,184. Then they let you add in contracts, warrant articles that were approved in that same year. So, last year, we had two contracts. NEBPA 112 was a $19,465 warrant article, and NEBPA 12 was an article of $107,221. And those were the two warrant articles for the unions. So, that came to $33,000, $33,181,870. That becomes your top number for the, the beginning of the default budget. Since we have contracts, six union contracts, we get to add in those union contract amounts that we put on the warrants when they were voted on. As you know, when we do the budget and the warrant for union contracts, we list each year the union contract and what the cost is. That is for the use in this default budget. And as you can see, there, they told $11,000, $11,779, $16,927, $56,640, $34,163, $65,281, and $87,698. Those are the, the amounts that were on the warrant for those six contracts. Then, because when we do the warrant, when we do those warrants for those union contracts, we use current health rates, current retirement costs, current workers' comp. They go up. We're allowed to include those. So, for those union contracts, health insurance for those union members was an additional $23,625. Retirement increases were $517,299, and workers' comp was $32,763. Now, if people remember that, we talked about the retirement cost was a lot less when I discussed the budget. Well, that's because when we discussed the budget, we just talked about general fund. And two of these contracts cover wastewater treatment fund. So, that is why the increase in the retirement cost. One-time purchases. We have to withdraw the one-time purchases out of the, out of the default budget, because, once again, they're one-time capital purchases, they're not recurring. That came to $159,000. And those one-time purchases, if you remember correctly, we talked about the, the roof at the old salt shed, $52,000. This lighting upgrade that we did throughout Town Hall, of 30, tennis courts resurfacing over at Wasserman Park. And some minor other capital projects that we did throughout the year.
Yeah.
In the budget, so that's the negative $159,000. Well, because we have a 53rd week of payroll, if the default got passed, we have to add that payroll in, because that's an anomaly. It's, it's, it's a one-time cost. So, that's $352,223. And then we get to take the net of debt service. So, debt service was $1.2 million in 2021, 2021, 2122. It's going to be about $1.1 million. So, the total default budget is $34,146,555. What I like to do is I like to do a comparison for the people at home, because of tax rate. So, you take that $34,146,555, then you take out your estimated revenues, like you would do with your taxes. Well, our revenue proposed in the budget was $17,889,659. 53rd week of payroll, council at the beginning of budget process, I've mentioned this many times, said $300,000 out of fund balance to fund the 53rd week of payroll, and then there was another use of fund balance of $1,350. Well, as time goes on, the council may or may not want to use that to offset this default budget. So, that's where I come up with the $16,939,659. Then we have to add in tax overlay and the veterans' credit. Divide that by the property, $18,407,226 is what is proposed property levy. Divide that by the valuation, it comes to $5.11 compared to $4.84 of the proposed budget. The difference is made up of 27 cents. Variations are appropriations is a negative 11 cents, revenues is a positive 30 cents. That's where your 27-cent variance comes into play on the default budget. So, the default budget number, if approved by the council, would be $34,146,555, and that would be needed to be moved to the warrant.
And what's the, what did we just pass for a budget?
We just passed $34 million, I got it, $34,539,495. So, the difference is $392,940. And people are going to say, hey, wait a second, years past, it was millions of dollars, $4 million. The reason being is because, I hate to keep harping on this, the way DRA makes us account for our capital reserves, and our, our capital reserve fund withdrawals, and deposits, to be quite honest with you.
Yep.
Because we have to have those separate warrant articles now for the deposits, but because they don't want the withdrawals in the budget anymore, it modifies the default budget.
The default budget, yep. Okay. Any questions on the default budget at this point? Nothing from Peter. Do we have a motion to move the default budget number to our warrant article?
Still moved.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara. I was looking for you, Peter, you got to wave your hand or something, if you want to make a second. Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll, we'll vote on moving the default budget number of $34,146,555, no.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
$555?
Yes, that's the number.
To the budget as part of the warrant article for the budget.
Correct.
All those in favor, signify, oh, no. Peter, why don't you start us off?
Aye.
Okay. Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
And Lon?
Would, aye.
Okay. That passes seven zero zero.
I really do feel like Big Brother's watching me, by the way. 1984, the book 1984.
Except right now, all we see is the default tax rate.
Good.
Okay. So, where does that bring us? To review of the 2021 Town Warrant.
It's a biggie.
Do you, do you want to say anything special about it, or we'll just go through?
The only thing that I would like to say to the council is that tonight, we'd be putting a recommendation for each money article on, on the ballot. And that will go to deliberative session, from the warrant, that will go to deliberative session. And at deliberative session, you'll have another opportunity to vote on whether or not you want to support it, or not to support the articles. But I just want to get that out there, that tonight will be, it'll be a twofold. We'll read.
So.
Go ahead.
We're looking for the recommendation of the Town Council for each of these items.
Correct.
Right now.
Correct.
Okay. And we will have another time after the deliberative session to.
We have to read the, the article into the record tonight, and we just say? You don't have, you're, it, we've done it several different ways over the years. Some, some years, we just highlighted the dollar amount. Like, for instance, we'll, for Article Three, which is the 1.188,000 for Capital Reserve Fund deposits, we'll just say that, and then the vote. Other years, we read the whole thing.
Let's go with the first way.
What?
We're going to go with the first way.
Most, most of the time, we've done exactly that. This article summarizes it, and what you're doing is it's proposing this. And then we do the.
And these were covered during the public hearing.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God, yes.
Correct.
Plus, it's kind of the voter guide.
So Article two, Article one is going to be to elect officers, right? Uh, do we want to take these individually? We have to take these individually. So Article two.
Just before we move to Article two, just so people are aware, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is Article one is, like you said, elective officers, just so people are aware, because everybody wants to watch this tonight.
I'm sure.
There are three town councillors' seats available for a three-year term. There are two library trustees' seats available for a three-year term. There's one ethic committee member for a three-year term, one trustee of trust funds for a three-year term, and the town, one town clerk tax collector for a three-year term. So that is, will be all up. Filing period is at the end of the month of February, the last Wednesday of February to the first Friday in, uh, March. To March fifth, so, sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you. I was going to just notice. Article two is the operating budget article, and we just, uh, voted to put thirty-four thousand, five hundred and.
Four million.
Thirty-four million, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars into the operating budget with a default budget of thirty-four million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, and there's wording in there that this is all part of RSA forty thirteen, ten, and sixteen, et cetera, et cetera. Do, uh, does council have any comments on that article, or should we vote? Finley?
I move to recommend, uh, Article two, the operating budget.
Motion made by Finley and.
Second.
Peter.
Seconded by Peter.
Let Peter do it.
Okay. So motions made by Finley and seconded by Peter to move Article two as presented, or to support, recommend Article two. All those in favor, um, by roll call. We'll start with Nancy.
Yes.
And then Finley?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
And Barbara?
Healy, yes.
And Lon Woods?
Wood, Jay.
Okay. So that is a seven, zero, zero recommendation. Article three is the capital reserve funds out of the, for the general fund. Uh, they're all listed here, and the total, as we came up with, was one point eight eight million dollars to go into capital reserve funds.
I'd like to move recommendation of Article three as written.
Second.
Moved by Nancy to recommend and seconded by Barbara Healy. Uh, if there's no other comments, we'll start, we'll call for a vote. Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Peter?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Aye.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. So that passes seven, zero, zero. By roll call. Article four, to see if the town will raise an appropriate five hundred thousand to add to the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund, as we discussed earlier.
Go ahead, Peter.
Peter, you going to move that one?
So moved.
Moved by Peter, seconded by.
Second.
Lon? I was looking that way.
That's fine.
Um, to recommend that to the town. If there's no other comments, we'll call for a vote. Peter?
Yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Nancy?
Yes.
Finley? And Tom says yes, so that's passes seven, zero, zero. Uh, Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars as a gross budget item for the purposes of the Pine Knoll Shores Drainage Study. This is a bond that requires a three-fifths ballot vote.
Move approval.
Moved by Bill and seconded by Barbara. Uh, is there any comments? We'll call for a vote. Uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Lon?
Wood, Jay.
And Peter?
Yes.
Yes. That passes seven, zero, zero as well. So we'll have this written, uh, written up in real form and, and available to sign.
We'll have it available for you next Thursday night.
Okay.
Um, to sign, depending on what you do with that petition, citizens initiative petition. Uh, it'll be ready for you to sign because, um, we have to wait till then if we're going to include it or not include it in the warrant.
How, when do we have to have this signed by?
We have to have it posted by the last Monday in February, which is the twenty-second of February. So we will have everything ready for your signature next Wednesday night. Um, the state forms, the, uh, MS six thirty-six, the MS default budget, and the warrant article, uh, for everybody's signature next Thursday. During the me- after the meeting, we will sign all those.
Barbara, you won't be at that meeting? Are you going to be in town at all that weekend, or?
Friday morning?
Yes, I can have, well, it'll be available Thursday, so yes, we'll keep it for you Friday.
Just need to sign it by Monday or something like that.
Well, we.
Preferably Sunday.
Well, we, honestly, it'd be Friday afternoon, we're going to be probably posting because we have to post it at the polling locations, and two of our polling locations are school. And since that week of the twenty-second of February is school vacation week, the schools aren't open, so we usually try to get in there the Thursday afternoon to post these. So we'll have to.
Well, you can get there Thursday afternoon, you have to get there Friday.
On Friday, I'm sorry, Friday the nineteenth. It's been a long day.
It has been. Okay. Good. So we'll look for Friday to get everybody's signature by that time. That brings us to, um, council meeting minutes, I think. Well, no.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council meeting minutes from Wednesday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any, any corrections?
Page one, line forty-six. I've graduated from body to boys. Should we Counselor Boyd, not Counselor Boys?
So it turns the D to a, the S to a D, huh?
Please. That's all I found, Counselor Healy.
Yeah, page two, line eleven, council, the word council should be capitalized. Page four, line twenty, Mr. Library Board of Trustees, McCallie advised. I'm not sure where that should be.
Excuse me.
So.
Um, well.
I can't remember what we were trying to say there.
What line is that, Barbara?
It is line twenty.
Twenty to twenty-one.
On page four. After budget, the end of the first sentence, Mr. Library Board of Trustees, McCallie.
Yeah.
Was that you that said that, so?
Yeah. Basically, I, I, Peter asked the question where the seventy-seven thousand dollars came from, and I said, uh, with the library board of trustees, seventy-five thousand dollars is for a capital reserve fund transfer. So even if you, if you just say, take out the library board of trustees and just say, I advised, it works. Says the same thing.
Just add what?
Take out library board of trustees.
All right.
Okay, line, page four, line forty-two, socially-distanced fall and winter activities. Socially-distanced does not need to be capitalized. Page five, line seven. Should be number of visitors, I mean, it climbed, so it, that needs to be for about ten years, but the, oh, I know what I'm, was trying to say. Where it says now, but the visitors climbed from an average of one hundred a day. I don't think the visitors climbed, it was the number of the visitors climbed. Increased.
Or the visitor attendance.
Yep. Okay, page five also.
So what, what are you going to put there, Paul? Visitor attendance or number of visitors?
Whatever the council wants.
Well, so what do you want?
Visitor numbers.
Visit, yeah.
Number of visitors?
Yeah, increased.
Number of visitors, okay.
Okay, line nineteen on the same page. Uh, should, the, the way it reads is the impairs the lifeguard's line of, across the water, yeah. So it needs to be read that line of sight across the water. Page five, forty-four, line forty-four. Office deemed to be on decent shape should be in decent shape.
Indecent shape.
Page six, line twenty-two. Prolong the be. Yeah, it should be prolonged the life. And page nine, line twenty-two. He stated some of the officers so get, it should be, should be, should be a do in there and it's not a so. Line nine, twenty, um, pa- number, line twenty-two.
So that so should be do.
He stated some of the offices so get twenty-four hours annual now. So just, it should read, he stated some of the offices do get twenty-four hours annual now. I was done at that point.
Is that it?
That's it.
Any other changes or corrections? From the council? All those in favor of the motion to approve as amended the minutes of January thirteenth? My roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Messing it up now.
Yes, he is.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. That passes seven, zero, zero.
I think he's gotten bored, is what it is.
Very, very sly at, at ten minutes of ten on a, on a Thursday night.
What?
What was the second on that? I know Bill moved it.
Bill moved it, I thought Barbara seconded.
Okay, hang on, I missed that.
Yeah, she did. January fourteenth, we had minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, second.
Move, motion by Bill and seconded by Nancy.
Page two, line twelve, it should be Roth House, not Rott House.
You sure?
I, I would defer to my colleague wearing the distinguished blind.
I think the esteemed gentleman is correct.
Okay.
On page four, line forty-five, I am Vice Chair Boys again. And then on page forty-six, where it says vice chairs, chairs, should be apostro- um, should have an apostrophe between the R and the S.
Where was that one? I'm sorry.
On page two, line forty-six.
Two?
Two?
I'm sorry, page four. I'm sorry, page four, line forty-six.
Okay.
Barbara?
Mm-hmm. Page three, line seven. It says the rest of the general public that is warring mask, it should be wearing. Page three, line thirteen. Attendance from the last several years, there should be insert years in there. Line, uh, page four, line six. To be recorded. The way it says by listening to the recorded.
Recording.
Yeah, should be recording. Um, and then page nine. God bless the lady who has to type these. That's not what the correction is. Page nine, line forty-two. Fifty thousand, a new dump truck for buildings and grounds, this is estimated at fifty thousand, we need a dollar sign in there. And on line forty-seven, same page. Should be, oh, it says links, and the word should be leaks. Okay?
Is this the first page and the first?
Page three, line seven. General public that is warring mask, it should be wearing.
W E A.
That's it.
Any other changes or corrections to the minutes of January fourteenth? If none, we'll call for a vote. Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Peter?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
In case you didn't hear, Peter did say yes. That came through very quietly on. So that passes seven, zero, zero. We have minutes from January twentieth.
Mr. Chairman, move the town council meeting minutes of Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nancy. Are there any corrections or changes?
Mr. Chairman, on page five, line forty-five, Counselor Boys, should be Boyd.
Again?
Yep. It's okay.
Can you tell the state person typed all these up?
Yes, I do.
It's a lot.
S and D are pretty close, so.
Page six, line eight, it reads Counselor Harrington stated that using some of the money in the fund budget was also suggested.
Oh, the fund budget?
The fund budget.
That was accurate.
I wish we had one.
That was going to be my comment, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what should be inserted there.
I don't.
Does Counselor Harrington want to tell us what she was thinking? Fund?
I, I thought it was supposed to be fund.
That's all I had.
I'm reserved, um, no, no.
Nancy?
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Page five, line six, nineteen thousand, needs a dollar sign. Page five, line seven, thirty-one thousand, needs a dollar sign. Page five, line sixteen, Twin Bridge Road, need to capitalize the road. Page eight, line thirteen, um, there's something funky there going on with Kyle Fox.
Now be, be nice now.
Well, I think the Kyle Fox wasn't supposed to be in there, so the parentheses, Kyle Fox, should be removed. Page ten, line thirty-three. I can't read my own writing. Something should be lowercase.
Segue.
Thank you.
Page, where are we?
On page ten, line thirty-three.
Ten, line thirty-three.
So you know what to put there, Paul?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Fox segwayed to discuss, it's just, um, lowercase. And I would like to thank Rhonda Fleming, who is our note taker for the minutes. It's a lot of work.
She bailed us out because the person nobody took no, uh, minutes, couldn't do it for these four. She stepped up to the plate. Rhonda's always been very helpful and do whatever she needs to do, or whatever I ask her to do, she steps right up and does it, so I'm appreciative of that.
Yep. Is that it? Any other corrections, additions, deletions? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Peter?
Aye.
Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Yes.
And Nancy?
Yes.
Seven, zero, zero. Brings us to January twenty-first.
Mr. Chairman, I move the town council meeting minutes of Thursday, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, as presented.
Make a motion from Bill, seconded by.
I'm waiting for.
Peter?
Peter.
Did you want to second that? Seconded by Peter.
Make sure he's.
And yet, so you have no corrections? Anybody else have corrections? Congratulations. So we'll move to a vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Tom, yes. Peter?
Yes.
Uh, Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
And Lon?
Wood, Jay.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our minutes. Um, at this point, we come to comments from the press. Seeing none. Comments from the public. We did get a letter it, from, uh, Lorene Allen, and I'm going to, um, summarize it since we went through a lot of this, Lorene Allen, and I'm gonna summarize it since we went through a lot of this, but she was basically referring to a lot of these House bills that had to do with, uh, water. Thank you for placing discussion of a support letter for HB four seventy-eight on the agenda. Uh, I'm sure that, she's sure that we were aware that it was moved to, moved to House Judiciary. She wanted to also call our attention to three additional bills, uh, which were discussed tonight. HB one thirty-five, co-sponsored by Representative Nodder, has a nine AM hearing on the sixteenth. Uh, HB two thirty-six, uh, co-sponsored by Representatives Mooney and Healy, has a ten AM, uh, hearing, uh, on the sixteenth. And, uh, HB three sixty-eight, uh, co-sponsored by Representative Rung, has an eleven AM hearing on the sixteenth. And the letter that she sent to the council talks about what these pertain to, and we've been discussing that earlier today. Uh, one thirty-five pertains to parties who are found to be responsible for private well-drinking water contamination. Two thirty-six pertains to establishing a six-year statute of limitations relative to damages for PFAS. And three sixty-eight pertains to medical monitoring and allows a claim for medical monitoring to be made if specific conditions are met, including the assignment of responsibility by the state of a party has been found to have caused exposure to a designated hazardous or toxic substance, which increases risks of illness or disease. And she further states that a link to remote hearings, which includes an option to sign in support of a bill, uh, sign up to give testimony and a right to the committee can be found at the general court, gencourt.state.nh.us page, uh, which is what Counselor He, uh, Representative Healy passed out this evening as well. And she thanks us for the work that we're doing. Fortunate to live in a state where public participation is welcomed, and in a town where our elected officials and residents have worked together to further the needs of Merrimack. Thank you, Lorene Allen, Merrimack citizens for clean water. If there are any other comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, make sure that, uh, Lorene's Allen is fully put into the record. I mean, not for, I'm just saying the letters.
Yeah, no, her letter should be part of the record. I did, I summarized it. Thank you, Lorene, I appreciate your sending that in. Um, comments from the council?
Peter.
Barbara?
Peter has...
Let's go to Peter first, if you don't mind. Peter?
Yeah, I just wanna say, I wanna give, uh, a thanks to Nick and Justin for allowing me to be able to participate. This was, uh, much better than just being on the telephone.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I thought he was gonna say that, too.
That's what he's thinking.
We thought you were gonna say it'd be better than being here, but, you know, probably is better since you're down in North Carolina, or South Carolina, and I imagine the temperature's a little bit more moderate.
Any snow down there?
Barbara?
No snow.
So, so Nick's in the booth going like this? So anyways, um, anybody who is still with us tonight, um, I am on the committee for the two seventy-fifth Merrimack anniversary. And in case you haven't seen my notes on Facebook and the various forums, or even on Merrimack TV's bulletin board, we're doing a recipe book in commemoration of the two seventy-fifth anniversary. So you are invited to send your family recipes, and if you have a picture of the person who gave you that recipe, you can send that along as well, and if you check the bulletin board on Merrimack TV, you will see the address, but just in case you are having something, you can write it down with. It's the two seventy-fifth recipe at Merrimack, New Hampshire, Merrimack NH, sorry, dot gov. Again, that's two seventy-fifth recipe at Merrimack NH dot gov. Send me those recipes.
So that's two seven five TH recipe?
Two seven. Two seven five recipe.
Okay, I thought I heard you say two seventy-fifth.
Yeah, that's the anniversary.
Yeah.
But it's not in the email address.
But I didn't know what TH was going in there or not. So two seven five recipe. Sounds good. Any other comments from the council? Finley?
Yeah, I've, uh, I've joined a couple of folks on the two seventy-fifth subcommittee, and, um, John Listock is one of those members, and he has made the comment on a few occasions where, how some of the participants are getting older. And his fear, his concern is that as you get older and you start dropping off, history is gonna be forgotten. That's his big thing, so just so that some of history isn't forgotten, I wanted to just mention that a, a young lady named Fern Jones passed away about a month ago. And at one point in time, she was extremely active in town, and, um, and I didn't wanna be part of that history, to let that kind of thing drop off the edge and be totally forgotten, but she, uh, she was kind of out of the loop, probably the last ten or fifteen years, but always was active. Owns a few properties in town, lived at the end of Wilson Hill Road. Her home was torn down, I'd say maybe two years ago, I lose track. And a new development is going up down at that end on the Amherst Line, but, uh, she was, she was a nice lady, I remember her, wanted, remember her fondly, wanted to just mention that. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, just, everybody needs to remember, although we're not wearing masks here at the, at the bench, we're reasonably distanced and taking care of ourselves, so we urge and encourage everybody in town to continue to take care of yourselves with respect to COVID-nineteen, the flu, the cold, whatever else is going on, and watch out driving in the snow. This winter's not over yet, we'll probably get some more, and, uh, there's usually ice related to that. So take care of yourselves, be careful, we wanna keep you around. And, um, we'll talk to you next time. And so, any motion to adjourn? Lon Woods made a motion to adjourn. Anybody second? Seconded by Barbara. By roll call, Peter?
Aye.
Lon?
Wood, aye.
Barbara?
Healy, yes.
And Bill?
Boyd votes aye.
Tom, yes. Finley?
Suddenly votes yes.
Harrington, yes.
And so we're adjourned. Thank you very much, Merrimack.